Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Wasteland Street Scene Policy Committee. I am councillor Jonathan, the Chair of this committee. The meeting today is considering a number of items that have closed reports or closed appendices. When we get to those items, if members wish to discuss items in closed appendices, you will please indicate beforehand and we will have to close the meeting to members of the public and to the webcast before we discuss those closed appendices. If we reach an item that is closed, we will have to close the meeting. Hopefully, that will be later on in the meeting after the items that members of the public have come to take part in have passed. Can I request mobile telephones and other such equipment to switch to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is two to square. Can I ask members of the committee to introduce themselves? Let's go around the table this way.
Alexey Diamond, Green spokesperson.
Tim Huggan, councillor for Crookston Crosspool.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood. Mark Jones, councillor for Burngrieve.
Nabeel Maunaun, councillor for Park and Albaton.
Sarah Bennett, councillor for Stockswidge and Upadon.
Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southey Ward and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Thank you, everyone. I'll ask the officers on either side to introduce themselves. We'll come to individual items, officers on those reports.
Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Richard Ayer, director of Streets in Regulation.
Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you. Apologies for absence. I'm aware we have apologies from councillor Turpin. I believe he had a bit of an accident in the park. I hope he's not too bad and he'll be back with us soon. Alexey's nodding. Good. Good luck, Paul. Not aware of any other apologies. I think we're all here apart from Paul. Exclusively the present public. I've also already mentioned this. There are closed reports under a number of items to come, so we may have to close the meeting when we come to those. Item four, declarations of interest. No? Okay. Item five, minutes of previous meeting. Does anybody have any issues to raise of accuracy on the minutes of previous meeting? Everybody up there now? Okay. Can we take those as agreed? Agreed, Chair. I'm told that we don't do matters arising in this policy committee, so if government are rising protest now... No, okay. In that case, item six, public questions and petitions. Now, I've had a number of... We've had a number of public questions coming in advance by the deadline. We only have 30 minutes for this item, so I'm not going to be able to allow questions that were late. I would like to check. I've got a list of people who I believe have submitted questions in advance. I would like to check they're all here so I can allocate the time, because I'm going to have to limit time taken with public questions. So I have one from Ibra Hussain. Are you here? Yes. Ashad Mahmood? Yes. Afzal 1K... It was an email address, but I think it's the name. Is that person here? The question is along the lines, what is the purpose slash need for signage on PHVs? Is that person here? Is that you? Okay. Right. Okay. Chloe Wilks? Yes. Nazar Rov? Yes. Paul Gosney? Yeah. Lee Ward? Yeah. Barry Calder? Yes. Angel Islington? No. Okay. And James Martin? Yes. Okay. Right. In that case, we have one petition and a number of questions. Can I ask for the petition first from Ibra? We'll come to your questions later, if you will. You have three minutes to present your petition, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chair. My petition before you is with regard to the policy which you are considering today, with regards to the private hire vehicle specification. And within that, the policy for consideration is the door signage. The purpose of this petition is to make you aware what the trade is going through or the trade is facing at this moment of time. One of the main aspects of door signage which you have proposed in the policy is to be permanent. And the disadvantages of that is, one, the very specific is the security of the driver and the security of the passenger as well. In light of that, we would ask that you remove that consideration from your proposals. And I've also emailed you various proposals for you to consider as well. As part of that petition, because the report is before you and you can consider that very carefully, the detailed report, is that we are asking for the reposition of the door signages to go to the front screen as well. I'm sure you have received my emails and all the members of this committee as well to consider those proposals. Now, over the number of years, I've been a councillor for 34 years, many of my colleagues are here, long-time drivers as well, is that the security and the safety of drivers is paramount. Now, if you ring 111, there is no chance of getting through to 111 to report the incidents or to receive the assistance from the police. Now, it is very difficult when the officer has wrote an email to one of the taxi drivers stating, and it's in an email, that when you arrive or approach the area, remove your door stickers and as soon as you've gone through, put your door stickers on. Chair, that is impossible to do because you can't do that. When the vehicle is hit with a stone or an egg, there is a sudden impact and that impact is very detrimental. Imagine you were sat there or your children were sat there. How would you feel? This whole issue is about safety. As for the crime prevention, when the crime prevention advice is given, well, it is always said, remove your valuables and remove them from your vehicles. The drivers do that. But if your proposals are as they stated, then we can't do that and the vehicles will be becoming sitting duck to shoot at. That is not acceptable. So I ask in this petition that you please consider very seriously the implications of your proposals and these specific proposals. Yes, we welcome the tinted windows policy, CCTVs to be voluntary and also on clarification on the future additional tests and also on the criteria as well. And also the vehicle emission policy, because the government has stated that the whole policy of the vehicle age should be based on emissions only. And we are asking that for you to consider that and also today, take serious note of what we say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ibra. Exactly to time. Very good. So we now turn to questions. Now, I'd like to say, we have had obviously a number of questions. We've also had a great many representations that weren't in the form of questions that came to us. These have been circulated to members of the committee in advance of this meeting. So when it comes to your questions, I will need you not to give the preambles just to give the questions, because otherwise there will not be time for all of the questions. So can I go first to Ashad Mahmood, please? And can Afzal please stand by?
Good afternoon, Chair and respected councillors. My question is, do I follow the crime prevention officer's advice to remove valuables and vehicle door signage from my vehicle overnight when I finish my shift? Or do I follow the licensing condition to have permanent door signage that has greater risk potential for my vehicle to be broken into and damaged? I am sure anyone in my position would agree with and follow the crime prevention officer's advice. I plead and urge you to please take my point seriously when you are making your decision.
Thank you, Mr Mahmood. So there will be a discussion later in the meeting of whether the front door signs should be permanent or merely secure. That is something we'll come to later in the meeting and your comments have been heard by members of the committee. Afzal? And yeah, can Chloe Wilks stand by for a question? Sorry, can you come to a microphone, please? Can you come to a microphone?
Good afternoon, sir. So I have four questions. Firstly, it's quite simple. What is the purpose and/or need for the signage on private hire vehicles? Secondly, is this for public safety? And if so, how exactly do the signs offer any safety to public or customers? Alternatively, are the signs for the benefit of council enforcement officers so they can see which vehicle is a target? And finally, has the council actually carried out any public surveys which have determined that customers do require signs on private hire vehicles? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Afzal. If you've got access to the agenda document for this meeting, in Appendix I, there is a substantial amount of the evidence that we have gathered on the issue of signage, including petitions and arguments made on both sides. But so you can find it there, you can find that kind of substantial answers to your questions in Appendix I on the agenda papers. I hope members have looked at Appendix I in the context of all the reputations we've had. Thank you. So can I have Chloe Wilks next, please?
Removing signage is taking the power out of the customer's hands and they will have less control over their own safety. Some of the people I work with have said they'd feel scared, anxious and confused if they couldn't find their taxi. Taxis are an essential asset for vulnerable people to feel safe and it should be made clear as possible to help everyone whatever their needs. With all the above experiences and discussions in mind, I feel it is essential to have clear signage for private hire vehicles and ask the committee to ensure that the policy is adopted and enforcement to display the specific logo of the operator. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. So there will be a discussion on signage later in the meeting. The proposal before us is to require the specific signage of the operator to be visible. There may be a discussion of whether signage for multiple operators is suitable, which may or may not serve your immediate needs, but obviously the committee will consider that. Can I have Nazar Rov, please? Can you use the microphone, please?
Good afternoon, councillors. Good afternoon, Chair, and good afternoon to council officers and members of the public that have come and the people that are listening across Sheffield. First of all, Chair, I would like to start with proportionality and diligence should be the very fundamental steps of this council and the principles that underlie any licensing practice the council wishes to enforce. Now, the GMB stance on this has been very clear and crystal clear. No permanent signage on vehicles. The front two signage must be limited to A4, must be magnetic, clear, easy and simple to read. A company logo must be optional and not compulsory because of multiple platforms that we work on. So if you're working on three different companies, you're not going to have three stickers on the car because that would confuse the car. So that's what we're arguing and we're arguing that we should need. And the reason for the arguments and the question is Crime and Disorder Act 1998, which makes a legal requirement for all the local authorities to consider crime and reduction. We drivers have been pelted with stones on our very own streets while we are in pittance to put in our children's mouth. They used stones in the Middle Ages. The problem is now, councillors, we're being stoned every other weekend, cars are being damaged and everything. Why is crime prevention advice not being taken seriously by licensing or by the council? That's first. Drivers cannot afford to buy a second vehicle. If you have permanent signage on their vehicles, family members are going to be put a huge amount of risk. I'm assuming all children and all people matter, including our own. So why should we be clearly labelled and like another representative has said, sitting ducks to be targeted? The authorities' response to this has not been very welcoming for the taxi trade. We do not require any additional signage. We have currently A3 signs on the vehicle. I have done some mocks and examples, if you wish to have a look at them, and these are ones which we have put together with people from disability groups and we've spoken to them and these are the ones that where they can be clearly identified and clearly seen as a taxi. A4 signage should be sufficient on a taxi. There are currently eight different ways of identifying a taxi already on the vehicle. Our neighbouring councils like Rotherham and Barnsley all have A4 stickers on their vehicle and they only have two. Why are we going over the odds? We're becoming more draconian than some of the policies that are in Rotherham in place. And I hate to say, this council is going in that direction. The technological advancements...
So, Mr Rov, everybody else has been very good at not giving the whole preamble to sticking to the questions.
I've only got 30 seconds left. But it's important I speak to people like yourself today because you're going to be taking a very important decision that's going to affect the livelihoods of hundreds...
That your representations have been circulated to the members of the committee. So we are aware of the arguments you've made. We've had these arguments many, many times from a number of people, so we do understand them. But yes, please come to your question.
Come to the final one then. So four stickers on the side of a vehicle is excessive. Okay? It's chaotic, it's madness. When is the council going to listen to us? During your debate today, please reason and please be careful not to make anything more confusing. We have all the technological advancements, text messages to drivers' names, to everything being sent out. What we're asked for is that you've got hundreds of replies and you've got loads of drivers sitting here that are really upset about their livelihoods and possibly be out of a job. We've had cars, we've had others. The financial circumstances are really in turmoil. Please, please take that into consideration during the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Rov. I mean, so in terms of the questions that you submitted in advance, the answer I have for you is that the use of signage is for public safety. Information sought from South Yorkshire Police states, as a city centre team, we have not seen any such reporting or emerging threat regarding criminal damage towards PHV. And as such, I think the first question back to the GMB would be to provide incident numbers, investigation numbers, et cetera. There may be case of non-reporting of this type of crime in which case clearly will not have been investigated due to being unaware. I can only speak on half the city neighbourhood district, but again, it's not something I've raised any meeting across the district I've attended as an issue or emerging threat. I think it's fair to say that we recognise that obviously there are parts of the city in which vehicles in general are targeted, but that includes other types of vehicles as well. So perhaps the evidence that is particularly linked to taxi signage is where the question with that lies. You did have another submitted question in advance, but I don't think you asked it, so I won't give the answer to that. Can I go to Paul Gosney?
Good afternoon, everyone, to the chair and councillors, everyone present today. Just for the record, we're in support of factory-fitted tinted windows, upper age limit on the vehicles, review the tests of stations and CCTV as voluntary. My question is to Sheffield City Council, and the operator signage has to be recommended that it remains and therefore I ask on the majority of the private hire trade in Sheffield, from our document that we have presented, that this remains the primary focus, being the safety of the drivers and the passengers. We also, for record, would like to support anyone that has an issue with stone throwing and we'd like to stay on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Gosney. Yes. So the discussion on signage is due to come up later in this meeting. The report you sent to us is present in Appendix I of the agenda papers, if anybody hasn't seen it, and that does include a survey, I understand it, of your drivers and their views on signage. I think it was a majority in favour of signage on vehicles. So can I go to Lee Ward, please?
Thank you, Chair and Comittee. As requested, you've already got this on by email, so I'll keep it short to my questions. The proposal for 2027, where a newly licensed vehicle must be zero emission capable, this has taken away completely from what has already been allowed and agreed with the Sheffield Clean Air Zone, that our trade can use Euro 6. We don't understand why this has been brought in right now. Surely we are better off waiting until 2027 before this is actually put to policy, when the Clean Air Zone can then give you data on the last four years on how clean the air is and what the taxi and private hire trade are actually contributing towards that. The next question that I have is regarding the age limits. It's currently five years, up to five years when it's new and nine years when it has to come off as a taxi or well, as a private hire. Why has that been reduced? We already have stringent taxi tests by your very own testing centre. So surely that a vehicle is continually passing those, then does it matter that it's five years when it comes on? Bearing in mind that the government has just said, well, the Bank of England have just said that we're going to be in recession till at least late 2024. We've just come out of Covid. A lot of things are affecting our trade right now and we feel that this is just an unnecessary change with no supportive evidence basically to back it up and put it in there in the first place. We do welcome the policy change in regarding window tints, but can we get it confirmed, please, by the glass? How it's worded now, it's basically saying that you have to have, or how I'm reading it, you have to have a certain level of tint, which is 65% currently. But if the glass gets damaged, you can then have factory-fitted tint, factually fitted glass, put into the vehicle. Well, if you can put factory-fitted glass in after it's been repaired, why can't we put it in before, when it goes for test? It seriously just makes no sense on how it's worded that. Very similar to the CCTV in regards to... It sounds, when you read it, as though they're making it a mandatory condition. Can we have confirmation that it's actually going to continue to be voluntary? Because there's no evidence to my knowledge or nothing posted that says that this council supports it because they have evidence that CCTV has assisted that many times that everybody has to have it. So I've kept it as short as I can. If I've got time, what about these magnets and stuff? No, I'll leave it. Thanks, everyone.
Nice try, nice try, Mr Ward. As you didn't submit that question in advance, I don't think, we can't take it. So on the issue of the zero emission... Sorry, on the 2027 deadline for zero emission capable vehicles, this is a proposal that takes into account the wider council objectives, including the 10-year climate action, net zero by 2030, and is obviously, is based on an assessment of the viability of zero emission capable vehicles. Now, if you look at the report, you will see that already about a quarter of the fleet is zero emission capable. So it's clearly not the case that economically they are unviable as an option. And I think what our hope is, that certainly before 2027, the balance will have changed sufficiently in their favour, that drivers will be wanting to choose zero emission capable, which includes hybrids, both charging and plug-in, as viable options, because they are not only better for air quality, but they are better for fuel consumption. They are in some, I understand in some cases easier to maintain or cheaper to maintain because the drivetrains don't have the same components as the other vehicles that can wear and need replacing. So it is our intention to move in that direction. Clearly, a 2027 deadline can be reconsidered before 2027, but I hope that it won't have to be. The question of the lowering of the age of first licence to four years isn't in the proposed policy, it's an amendment that members are going to consider. It's not just to lower it to four years at age of first licence, it's to extend it to seven years for zero emission capable. Again, as I say, a six-and-a-half-year-old vehicle is... Well, we've come to, there's come to the discussion, we've come to it in the meeting, but it's not intended to make it harder for drivers, it's intended to make it easier for drivers to operate zero emission capable vehicles. But certainly the question of whether that five years is lowered to four in order to just help nudge that change across will be come to in the meeting. The factory-fitted standard rear glass, factory-fitted standard rear glass will be permitted. I think, I'm not sure what else I can say to that. Perhaps when officers come to present a report, they can clarify that any further if there's a nuance that I've not understood on that point. And CCTV, yes, it will remain voluntary. It's, you know, we cannot predict the actions of future committees, but it is our policy that it remains voluntary. Obviously, we can see there are benefits to CCTV for both drivers and passengers, but there's also, you know, there's also risks and costs associated and we have to keep these things in balance. That's not to say that balance might not change in the future, but this is where we see it lying at the moment. Thank you. Barry Calder, please. Yeah, if you press the button on the microphone.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask the policy to ensure that people can book taxis and private hire vehicles by phone. The reason that I'm asking this is that we know that there are disabled people in the city who can't easily use the internet, but can use the phone. But also that there are a lot of older people who are much happier using the phone than using the internet. I'd noted in the papers for this meeting that in much of the city, the average number of elderly people is, I think, 19% of the population. In Woodhouse, it's as high as 25%. A lot of those people, particularly the older you get, the more difficult it is to fiddle around with the internet. And I struggle with it sometimes. If you need, particularly to get to hospital and you need to do that more as you get older, the only way you can do it is by phone. Phone is easy because you can do it by pressing buttons now and you can manage your own life that way, particularly if you've got no one else to rely on. I accept this means that taxi firms need to have someone to answer a phone and maybe this might mean that only the larger firm should be required to provide such a service. But it is essential, I think, that a phone booking service is provided in some way. I'd also like to... The policy to ensure that when disabled people, and it may be true of elderly people as well, do phone for a taxi, that they are treated with respect. I've always, when I've used taxis, booked with a particular firm, which has always been very good. But after lockdown, I had an urgent dental appointment that I needed to attend and I phoned this firm three hours before the appointment and was told by the young man on the end of the line that I couldn't book a taxi so long before I needed it. I asked how long I would need to leave before booking it and he said, within an hour of when you want to be there. So I waited until 50 minutes before I wanted to be there. I phoned up and was told that I needed to book earlier, that I needed to book at least before an hour beforehand. And I said, well, look, it's really urgent that I go to this appointment. It's the first time I've been able to go in two years and this problem keeps staying to... So he said, well, I can't guarantee anything. So I said, well, what do I do? He said, well, I'll see if I can get someone in the area. There's no one in the area at the moment. Blow me if within five minutes a taxi turned up. And it, you know, this is Pittsmore, it's just wonderful. The driver was from Andover Street, where I lived for years. He's a young man, a young man of Asian heritage and he couldn't have been more helpful. He got me into the cab and he said, when he took me up to Weetapace in... He got me into the cab, and he said, when he took me up to Weetah Place in Porsum Cross, which is where the only accessible dentist is, he said he would wait until I came out of the appointment, because it'd be difficult to book a taxi then. Am I running out of time?
Yeah, yes, I was about to ask you to hurry up, I think, I do apologise. It's a, you know, I was enjoying the story, but yeah, if you can get to the final question, please.
Well, I'll adjust that. Similar problems, my experience at times of get a late train back, this was obviously before, you know, well before Covid, particularly if you've been to a football match, in my case, in Manchester, of an evening, and you get back, and I need a Eurocab because I have this electric chair, and there is rarely one there, and what they've had to do on occasions is get people out of bed. And I have to say that, again, these are taxi drivers always of Asian heritage, these guys, you know, will even get out of bed to come and help you and help you get back to Pittsmore. It worked fine every time, except on one occasion, when they couldn't get anybody, and we had to wheel back, I had to wheel back down, had to walk back to Pittsmore from the station at midnight, and that is not good. I think the policy needs to be more robust.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Mr Calder. So just to respond to your questions, I think overall, I would say that we understand that, you know, we understand what you're saying. A lot of things you say, I think we hear a lot of from all sorts of users, and the difficulty of booking taxis, actually, I think everybody experiences sometimes, you know, it's very difficult to book a taxi when they need one. It's the nature of the market at the moment. We have, obviously, within our policies, we have certain powers to regulate the trade, but they are limited. We cannot, you know, we cannot design the trade the way we want it, and, you know, when we hear, you know, urgent needs to reach appointments, obviously, particularly people who are reliant on the taxi service as their main way of getting around, I, you know, I completely understand. So we don't, we don't feel that we can mandate operators to find a telephone booking service if they are operating an app-based service, that's, you know, the operators are private businesses, and that's their way they choose to do their business. But we accept that, we accept the point, I suppose, and if there's any, you know, if we're happy to meet with disability groups and others who want to look for ways that we can improve the service, we're happy to do that. We're happy to, you know, obviously take suggestions going forward as to how we're going to change our policies and how we can work with the trade to improve services. On the, on the training for dispatch workers, that is something that's in the policy. We're saying there should be awareness training for disability issues and other accessibility and so on, for, not just, we did this for the drivers in the policy we considered at the last meeting, and this policy for operators brings that in for the staff of private hire operators. On your last question, on Eurocabs, because they are hackney carriages, they can, I mean, they can effectively do what they want, you know, there is no, they don't, we don't direct them where they go, so that is a problem. And sometimes, sometimes you can get them, sometimes you can't, and, you know, we wish there were more of them on the road so that, you know, we all needed them when we got them. The trade is really struggling at the moment, it is, you know, the new vehicles are expensive, the old vehicles are falling foul of air quality rules, and so we don't have the numbers on the roads that we would like. It's not, it's not under the remit of any of the policies we're considering today to do anything with hackney carriages. There may be issues about the, there may be things we can look at when it comes to the hackney carriage policy, hopefully in February, but, you know, we'll have to see when that comes. But it will remain the case that we can't direct them to go where we think. Okay, thank you, Mr Calder. And so Angel Islington wasn't here, so James Martin is the next question. How long have we got left?
Six minutes.
We have six minutes left for questions, so we have one question after this, so if we can, yeah, try and keep to time, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll keep it brief, as this question, these questions should have been circulated in advance. The first question relates to particularly for customers requiring wheelchair-accessible vehicles, the need to be able to pre-book. Where operators allow other members of the public to pre-book, potentially a day or two in advance, particularly for early morning or late trips, there should be the same level of provision and allowing wheelchair-accessible vehicles to be booked. So I ask the committee to consider that in section seven, acceptance of bookings, that additional condition is considered there for that purpose. Secondly, you'll know I've raised concerns about point G in that same section seven acceptance of bookings, where the term where possible is used. I'm very concerned that that is, the condition needs to be clearer and more robust, that actually either where possible should be removed, or I've suggested some other points in terms of separating the mandatory aspects from anything where there is some concern and a need for negotiation, possibly from the licensing service. The main focus is to make sure that accessibility requirements, the accessibility needs are always the responsibility of the operator to communicate, so that other recent acts of parliament can be honoured. And yeah, I trust that you will have read the detail on that point, so please consider making a suitable adjustment to G and possibly adding items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Martin. So on the first point, it's the, the answer I have here is that hackney carriage vehicles, which make up the vast majority of wheelchair-accessible vehicles at Sheffield, are operated by self-employed licensees, and we can't mandate them to work for private hire operators. I think, I think that's putting it a bit bluntly, but the, the, yeah, I, I think, I think the issue you raise is something, is something we need to look at. I don't think it's something that we can legislate for today, but there is, you know, there is a challenge in terms of maintaining a wheelchair-accessible fleet of taxis in any, in any city. Some cities don't have wheelchair-accessible hackney carriages, and they have kind of different challenges to we do. We do that, but we probably don't have enough hackney carriages as a result of that. So however you cut it, there is a challenge for us to achieve in achieving that, that level of access, without there's some being some explicit cross subsidy or something, which doesn't seem to be an avenue that we can, that local authorities have been able to go down. So, you know, I think we need to keep working on this, and we need possibly, possibly help from elsewhere in order to have a solution that does maintain the fleet for the people who need it. On the second question, on, on, moving words where possible from section seven G, seven point G on acceptance of bookings, we've taken, I've taken some advice from legal on this, and they're saying that, well, it's something that we can look at, but it's not something we can decide to do today, because it would place, it would place obligations on operators we're not sure of the magnitude of those obligations, if they have developed systems that are a certain way, you know, asking them to throw it out and design a new one would be a significant ask, and something like that would have to be consulted upon, and we haven't consulted on doing something like that in developing this policy. So we can't do that today, but I think we can, I think, I hope we'll all agree that we will look at that going forward in terms of quite how the obligation on operators in terms of, you know, capturing the correct information when they take a booking and then acting on it can be met, because I think it's, put like that, is a perfectly reasonable request to make of operators. So I'm sorry, that's, I, answers can't be more positive than that, but that's all I've got for you today. Thank you for coming, Mr Martin. Mr Ibrahim Hussain, you have a question. We have a couple of minutes left? One minute left, be quick.
Well, I need to be very fast, don't I? What consideration was given to DFT recent consultation is comments with regards to the vehicle age limits based on emission policy only? Do you agree by introducing emission policy, we will have more zero emission vehicles and enhance more clean air, both taxi-travelled benefit and the city? Why did you not consider emissions-only policy now with zero emissions vehicles, given no age limits and with immediate effect? Why have you not mentioned in your report anything regards additional test centres and vehicle testing criteria, which myself and many of the people responded to as part of the consultation and made reference to the new way to introduce ABC criteria by rewarding the good drivers? I've sent you all these questions in advance, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, brother. It also applies to me, I think, doesn't it? So I need to give the answers very quickly. So the DFT consultation that was about, was guidance, it is not, it's not a statement to the law, and it is a matter for the licensing authority to use age limits, as we have done for many years. The emissions, the emissions policy is, is, it may not, is not about, in terms of Clean Air Zone, is not about zero emission vehicles, so this is a policy intended to improve air standards beyond Euro six, et cetera. The first question is answered the same answer to the first question, and the fourth question, as you've been advised, the work on testing centres is a separate piece of work that we'll consider after the other pieces, including the hackney carriage review, vehicle policy. So thank you, Mr Hussain, and that concludes public questions. Are we in time?
Yes, very well, Chair.
Thank you. Item seven, work programme. Who's bringing this?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to just draw the committee's attention to the work programme, which is set out from page 17 of the main agenda pack. On page 18 is the recommendations would be asking for the committee to agree. I'd like to specifically point out on, from appendix one, that's on page 20, this gives the proposed additions and amendments to the work programme since the last meeting, so it's worth noting those. And then from page 21 onwards is the plans for the forward work programme, showing the future meetings. So if we specifically note on page 18 those recommendations, that is what I'd be putting forwards for the committee to agree, please, I'll pass back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Are there any comments from members of the committee on this? I note that the sex establishment policy is still on the December agenda, there's some discussion whether that is going to be pushed back now, so I'm not necessarily 100% expecting to see that, but it's still on the work programme for now. It doesn't mean we have to do it, does it? Whether we agree or not. Okay, good, good. Okay, if there are no comments on that, the work programme is noted. Thank you. So the next item is future for the provision of kennelling services. Ian and Nicola, would you like to introduce yourselves and present the report, please?
Thank you. So Ian Ashmore, I'm head of Reforms Regulation.
I'm Nicola Reese, Service Manager, Projects and Improvement.
Okay, thank you. And firstly, I'd like to thank Nikki, actually, for pulling this particular project together. Members may have seen that there have been a couple of previous attempts to get to this position, and it's proved fairly tricky, given the nature of it and the lack of provision in the city, so there's been some really good work to get to this point. So in terms of the report before you, I'm not going to read it line by line, obviously, I'll go through the main points. If you feel I'm skimming too much detail, obviously shout out. The council has a statutory duty to look after stray dogs, and also to care for people who are in social care, who are unable to look after their dogs, so we've got a clear statutory duty. It's right to point out that, like most councils, we previously used to contract out this service, but Sheffield, for whatever reason, had a difficult market for this at the time, and in the end, we actually brought the service in-house when we took on some of the extra duties, particularly in respect to the police, so it represented best value. That's no longer the case, and there's been a very profound reduction in the number of stray dogs coming through, primarily because of social media, so it's very easy now for people, when they lose a dog, to just put it on their WhatsApp group on their street and things like that, and to get the dog back really fast or very quickly that it's all where it is. So the current site that we moved into back in 2006 was meant to be a temporary site, and here we are in 2022, still on the same site. It's not a great site in terms of age and the capital requirements where we to continue. It's good for location, but it's long been identified as a redevelopment site, as a great gateway site for the city. And it also was designed at a time when it was required to put the dogs outside during the day and then take them back at night, so it's very, very labour-intensive, and as a result, the, you know, we're losing money on this particular site. We are currently open seven days a week, eight till eight, and we are looking to change that. We do have seven colleagues who are animal care officers, many have been with us since the start of this, who provide a fantastic service, they currently work 23 hours a week, and we need to obviously make sure that throughout this process that, that there is good consultation with them. Just very briefly, just to say, in terms of the demand, you know, the reduction is really profound, 45% have been picked up on the same day, we're now at less than, you know, I know you can't split a dog, but 0.5 of a dog per day coming through gives you a sense. You know, we've often only got six dogs in, 6.9 dogs in at any time in the kennels, you know, so, you know, as recently as 1920, we had 13 dogs on average in a day, so you can see there's been a real difference. So we desperately need to do something different. So there's been a lot of work to look at alternative models, ranging from, you know, the full contracting out, as we used to before, to a hybrid model where we retain some responsibility, but we use a new facility in partnership. Some soft market testing has been done, there was no interest for some of those models, but there was a positive interest in Sheffield for a hybrid model from someone with a, you know, a very fantastic site. Can't go into more details at this stage for who that was, but it offers a really fantastic opportunity in a, in a good central location. So really, the recommendation here is members, if members were to support it, would be that we would go out to a full tender exercise, and that you would delegate responsibility for that final decision on receipt of those to the exec director to go through with that particular process. Obviously, with any potential staff implications, there would need to be all our internal processes, but the model proposed is one that would secure the future of some colleagues, but there would be a reduction in hours. It certainly is a great opportunity to provide a long-term solution for the kennels. I understand some of you had the opportunity to visit, you'll see that for a modern council facility, it is somewhat lacking, it's not a great facility for staff, annoys it for the animals, it's very difficult to exercise them, so we have, you know, welfare issues in respect, we can't really take them out and things like that. But what I would say is the team have done a fantastic job in those premises, and more than 99% of the dogs that have come through, and that's since, there's 400 since April in the previous year, well over 99% of those have gone on to be rehomed, gone to rescues or been adopted, so that's, you know, that shows you the level of care, and we would look to maintain that in the new facility. So there are some aspects of the report that are confidential, that you've got in a separate document, just in terms of some of the commercial aspects of it. The estimated saving, finally, if we were to go down this model, would be around 54K, and that would very much help, given the overall financials, but not only really, would it be just for the saving, it's a better solution, potentially all round. So I'll pause there, ask if there's any questions, or if you'd like to elaborate on any of the detail within the report.
Thank you, I've seen, I have a couple of points to add, but I've seen Mark Jones, do you want to come in first?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and the report. Particularly like to commend the climate change impact assessment at the end of this one. This is something we've been calling for a long time, and it's really welcome that that's brought on here, so thank you for that. Apart from the Damien Hurst image of a half a dog, there are some things I am concerned about in here, and actually, some of the options that we've considered. So for instance, I know obviously we're talking about dealing with strays, and we're looking to go into partnership with another organisation. However, I have noticed that there's not been any consultation with the workforce or the trade unions at this stage. I am a little concerned about being bar humbug just before Christmas and potentially arranging, announcing that. that people's jobs, seven people's jobs, will now be becoming precarious. So I'd like to see something done as soon as possible to address that element because these are workers who've already gone down a reduction in hours recently and I do have concerns about that. So actually, if you could give us any clarifications about the age profile, I know we've already got information on the demographics of that, but I'm not sure about the age on them. How many would be able to be achieved through natural retirements and everything else rather than forced redundancies?
Yeah. Can I answer that? Yeah. So although we've not sought any formal consultation, we have had a discussion with the unions and we have been down on a number of occasions to meet with the team. The unions have not wanted to attend those meetings yet because we're not in a formal consultation process, because obviously at this stage, we are simply going out to tender on that model. That's the proposal. But we've explained to the team some of the implications. I mean, one of the advantages potentially of this model is that there will be sufficient hours there for some of the people.
Sorry, in terms of, I don't think you're audible, I think...
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, and one thing we have done is that there are...
And I think, because you're speaking away from the mic, I think that's the problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You either move the mic or face away from the council you're addressing.
That's fine, sorry. So, yes, I can hear that's better, isn't it? So we've had a number of discussions with them. We have offered out some further training opportunities and we are developing apprentices and other pathways. Most of the, I think all the team are not in an age profile where they might be, for example, looking at V R or anything like that. But we are confident that there will be some, obviously we can't promise, but there will be jobs there still. And if there are reductions, that there would be other training opportunities and you're all aware that there is a council process with the talent pool and things like that. We hope it wouldn't get to that, but there are processes. They're very good staff and colleagues and there is a potential for them to see other things and do some other training and two have indicated that they would like to do that.
Can I just add? Sorry, thanks. Just to say that it is really regrettable that there's an impact on staff and we absolutely agree with that. But there is already a bit agreed in association with this project and there isn't a way to, because most of the cost of running the service is staff, there isn't a way to achieve that saving without having an impact on staff. So although it's regrettable, that's the top and bottom of it, really. But we have had, as Ian said, we have been really clear with the staff. We've given them as much information as early on as we could so that they're prepared for this, so that it's not something that we've landed on them just before Christmas. And it is an emotive time of the year and with everything else as well. But we have taken a lot of care with the staff to take them along the journey and to provide as much support as we can and we'll do absolutely everything we can to avoid any compulsory redundancy. So it will be handled as sensitively as possible.
Thank you. I just want to warn people against going into the, any of the information in the appendix, dealing with the proposing model and all that, because it's a confidential appendix. And if you do wish to do that, we have to close the meeting, ask everybody to leave and so indicate if you wish to go there. Did you have another comment, Mark?
Yes, please, Chair. There was some elements of the alternative proposals that we'd gone for and there was some stuff that I was unclear about. Well, there's several elements also on there. Primarily, I'll go to the questions as quick as I can on this one. Should we go with another provider and should their costs increase significantly or otherwise? How will we make sure that the cost burden of their model of operating doesn't impact on what we have to pay to provide the service that we currently have? Because obviously, this is about a budget saving and running more effectively and efficiently. However, depending upon the nature of the partner that we get, I could imagine a position where they want to maintain their provision, but they then move the costs on to us. So how can we mitigate against that occurring? Other element would be is reduction in terms of rehousing, rehoming, whatever the precise phrase is for animals. The statistics are immensely positive. I'm really quite surprised, I wasn't expecting it to be so good. How do we, will we be taking those metrics going forward and where would we be expecting the service to be provided against those baselines that we've already got? I'm assuming we're going to expect to see a maintenance of those rehousing, rehoming criteria or at least an improvement of that? And how would we enforce it if we should start to see a slippage on that? I was surprised at the statistics additionally, because I thought that the cost of living crisis that had already kicked in for many would have had an increase in terms of that dog's looking for rehousing and it doesn't appear to be the case. Is that correct? And finally, when you were looking at alternate provisions, and thank you for your indulgence, Chair, one of the things that occurred to me is that at no stage had we potentially looked at the dog rescue as beyond being just a statutory service. We hadn't looked at it as, let's say, a business opportunity such as holiday kennelling and everything else. Is that something that we can do or we are not allowed to? Because there is potential income generation from that that could support a service going forward. And I noticed that there was a cost for rebuilding a site. Would that cost not be able to be covered from central SIL, should that be done to? So there's quite a few to unpick there, Chair, so I apologise.
Can we not go into the specifics of the costs, please? Because that's in the closed appendix. I will close the meeting if we go there. I also, I'm not sure for your line of questioning, my understanding of the proposal is that under one eight two in the report, that it is effectively a co-location with another service, but it's still a council-run service that we're talking, we're not talking about outsourcing proper, where I think some of your concerns might bite a little harder. I don't know if that clarification is helpful. Yes?
Yeah, I think I can answer the first two or I'll certainly give it a go. So in terms of mitigations against costs going up with the new provider, and obviously we'll work very closely with commercial services to make sure that when we do the tender, that we secure that provision for a suitable number of years. I think in the report it says up to five years. So there is a limit to what we can do beyond that point, because we can only do the options appraisal based on what we found out in the soft market testing now. Obviously, the soft market testing doesn't commit a provider to giving us the service at that price, but it gives us an indication of what the market will provide. So obviously, we'll work very closely with commercial services to make sure that we get the best deal possible for the council. But we can't ever absolutely mitigate against costs going up in the future. We can only manage that in terms of the tender that we do at the moment. I don't know if Ian wants to add anything on that one. In terms of the rehoming criteria, obviously, what Ian didn't say, because it's sort of obvious, but it may not be true, obviously, a lot of the stray dogs that we get in don't need to be rehomed or rehabilitated because they're picked up by their owner. So obviously, the vast majority of our stray dogs do get collected by the person who owns them and it's the rest that we're sort of dealing with. But our rehoming criteria and the effort that we make to rehome or rehabilitate or rescue a dog that doesn't get collected by its owner won't change at all. We will be completely maintaining the responsibility for stray dogs, that the provider wouldn't have any influence on that or any activity involved in that bit. So that will carry on as it is and the team will carry on doing the brilliant job that they do at the moment in terms of looking after those animals and getting them rehomed where they can't be taken back by the original owner. I don't know if Ian wants to add to the rest.
And then just in terms of increase due to the cost of living, I mean, I agree. I think we were all expecting that at some point we might see a dramatic increase. It's still early days yet, I think it's fair to say, but the proposal we've got here, there would be some flexibility in that, were there to be some, an increase in stray dogs. But I think it's something we just need to keep an eye on. And in respect to the holiday kennelling, the reason that we were limited in the place we are now is that the standards for if you're doing holiday kennelling, where people might leave a dog for three weeks and things like that, the standard was such that we would have struggled to meet that and therefore we couldn't go in. And again, for those of you who've been down, compared to commercial kennels, we were in a different section of the market. I think it's fair to say, I don't think many people would have necessarily wanted to have come down and used us for that, albeit from a reputational point of view, I think there's a lot of trust in the service. So that's where we are now, whether in the future, beyond the first stage of this, whether it could be looked at. But I don't know, that's where we are with it.
I think, I've seen, I'll bring Ian around, Cliff. I think I'll echo those last remarks. Council chaplain and I did go and have a look at the kennels last week and I think, yes, people would not pay to have their animals looked after there. People are excellent, people are doing a really good job, but the standard of the building is such that it would take a lot of work and a lot of spend to bring it up to a standard where people would choose to take their animals there. And that's not what we want and it's remarkable that we've got a proposal in front of us that will give us a better service in terms of the welfare of the animals we look after and bring a cost saving. You don't normally get both sides of that equation, it's usually one or the other. Cliff?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for this. A slightly sort of tangential question is how do the dogs get down to you? I mean, do people bring them in? Do you have to go out and collect them? Do you have to go out and catch them? Does any of those aspects change as a result of this?
Yeah, it's a mixture of all of those things. So we do have, I can't remember what the job title is, but we do have dog wardens who will go and collect strays if they're reported by the public during office hours and members of the public can bring a stray dog into our facility. And yes, occasionally, a dog warden would have to go and catch one. So it's a mixture of all those things and that won't change. Those options will all still be the same.
Tim? I was going to say, this sounds like a very good model and I do understand why there's been a decline, because prices for people to purchase new puppies has gone exponentially higher. So this, the fact, this is why there aren't so many, because there is a real market for it. So to get down to that, I'd be slightly concerned if we went down the kenneling route, because there is a reputational risk. And also, the other risk is that we're now competing with Sheffield residents who have their own kennels and potentially unconducting them and putting them out of business, which I would not be happy to see, I must say. But this does seem all very good, because having had a mother who, we used to joke as my siblings, that she loved her dogs more than she loved us slightly, and also a girlfriend whose dogs used to, previous girlfriend whose dogs used to find their way into kennels quite regularly, because she used to lose them out in the countryside at various points. It does sound that this seems to be the best model to go down and also any pathways that you may have with staff in terms of apprenticeships now, that are to seem a very, very good way of moving forward. And just slightly concerned that the kennels have got to this state, actually, it's not a good look for the council.
Thank you. I think that was a comment, rather, a question. If decorum allowed it, I would ask councillor Woodcraft to give you a big hug following that remark, but maybe it's best that I don't. I don't see any more hands. I would just like to say, I'm very much welcome this proposal and thanks for all the work that's gone into it. Oh, sorry, Mike, did you...
Sorry, Chair, I was waiting for you to move from questions to comments.
Sorry, yeah, very good. Well, we have, councillor Huggins has moved us from questions to comments, so yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I think a lot of what's been said has been very sensible and helpful. In particular, I want to thank Nicola for the hard work that she's put into this report. If only the council had better deal in funding from government, then maybe the kennels wouldn't have got to quite the point they have. I was privileged to go around with Joe Otten and see the kennels myself last Friday and it is mainly decorative stuff, but it's also where the kennels are and how they're set up, so that the staff there actually have to walk round to take the dogs, to give them exercise, they have to take them out of the fairly small pens to take them round to a bigger enclosure. And clearly, that's not very good. And certainly, when you compare it, say, to the modern Battersea Dogs Home, we are leagues away from that at the moment. So I do think this report offers a very sensible way forward and I welcome it. And I'm sure we can, if there are any staff that can't continue to work alongside the new co-provider, then I'm sure that we can redeploy them and train them for work that would be suitable and acceptable to them. Can I also put in a plea for the cats? There is a cattery on site and it's good to know that that provision would also go with the new shared provider. And also, a couple of budgerigars here and there, because we know that people who go into hospital, some of them do have a combination of pets, although we were told that they drew the line at reptiles. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Catherine Diamond?
Just briefly, I'd just like to echo what Mike said and commend all your work on this. I think it's the best option that we've got and I'd just like to support it. And thank you for all your work and also the work of the staff there, which sounds really brilliant. And thanks again for the climate impact assessment. I think that's a good model that other reports can use. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any more comments. So yes, I would like to obviously echo the comments that have been made. Thank you for your work on this. I mean, I would like to kind of repeat the point in a different way. I mean, I think we were bombarded with emails, weren't you, when the report came out, that it talks about the power the council has after seven days of destroying an animal or what on earth is going on here. But we don't, I mean, certainly not after seven days and it's only in very, very rare cases, dogs at the end of their life and possibly those with the most unmanageable behavioural problems. And it's been, it's less than one per cent over the last year and a half. So it does occasionally happen and it's heartbreaking for everybody involved, because the people don't really care about the animals and do a really good job. And the new location will enable them to get more satisfaction, being able to care better for the animals. So I think we can gain some satisfaction from that too, if the proposal comes off. So with that said, are we in agreement unanimously? Thank you. Okay, so that report is agreed. The recommendations on page thirty-two are agreed. Next item is the private hire operator and vehicle licence policy. Thank you for everybody's waited for this. I'll just give a moment for the licensing officers to take their seats. If you want to, yeah, when you've sat down, if you want to introduce yourselves and introduce the report, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Claire Bauer from the Licensing Service, Service Manager.
Good afternoon, I'm Craig Harper, Policy Officer within the Licensing Service. I'll just quickly outline the report. So we're seeking approval of the private hire operator and vehicle licence policy. So the policy aims to provide guidance on applications, decision-making and the enforcement of those vehicles and operators. And it allows for transparency, accountability and consistency. So we're recommending today that members of the committee approve the policy and for it to come into force on the first of February next year. So the proposal is in this regard, really. So we're responsible for the regulation of private hire operators and vehicles that are licensed in Sheffield. Sheffield's first policy was published in two thousand and sixteen and this review builds on that policy, drawing on the statutory standards, any changes in legislation and the wider council policy and objectives. So it's aimed to, the design is to provide individuals with a clear, consistent basis for submitting applications, to provide a clear, consistent basis for determining those applications and to provide licensees with information on licensing requirements throughout the time in which they are licensed. So we've always sought to set some of the highest standards... And so we've always sought to set some of the highest standards in the country and be recognised for delivering best practice. And we think this review continues to assert that position and further enhances the requirements first developed in 2016. The primary focus of the policy is the protection of the public. So in terms of how this policy contributes, so as I previously mentioned, aims to provide individuals with a clear, consistent and concise guidance to all those who need to use it, so that's licensing authority officers in processing the applications and applicants when making an application. And to provide a clear, consistent basis for determining applications, so allows a structured and evidence-based decision-making for officers and councillors and achieve compliance with legislative, statutory and local standards. We did undertake an eight-week consultation earlier this year, we received over 100 responses, 112 of which were from Sheffield licensees. A copy of the responses can be found at Appendix D. The version of the policy that was consulted upon is at Appendix F. And amendments to that policy can be found in the other appendices that are attached. And the final draft of that policy is at Appendix H. We also undertook a number of stakeholder engagement sessions to understand comments that were submitted in the consultation period. They mainly revolved around the vehicle signage, of which you've heard comments today. So comments in relation to that can be found at Appendix I. Views of the licensing committee were sought at a briefing on the 11th of November and several kind of issues were raised within that briefing. So in terms of the private hire operators, it is the use of a telephone number for customers to make a booking. And then in regards to the vehicles themselves, it revolved around signage. So the use of signage to identify a vehicle is necessary in order to protect public safety and that the rear licence be permanently fixed to the vehicle. In regards to age limits, the wish to make comments on newly licensed diesel and petrol vehicles for that age limit to be lowered and for newly licensed zero emission capable for it to be increased. So the proposal that the committee put forward is for four years for petrol and diesel vehicles and seven years for zero emission capable vehicles, but to maintain that upper age limits for both those vehicle types. The only thing they wish to make a comment on was the window tints, to ensure that any replacement glass, if damaged, is the same standard as what was originally installed. And I think that's what one of the people said up there in regards to the window tint policy. We did undertake a quality impact assessment, we sought legal advice on the policy and we didn't undertake a climate impact assessment, I'm afraid to say, but we did seek advice from our sustainability team about how to include information on the climate implications and that is also attached within the policy. So the reasons for the recommendations today, so the Department for Transport recommends that authorities make available a cohesive policy document and to review that policy every five years. We already have in place that policy and this is a review of that policy from 2016. And it's recommended that members approve the policy in order for the updated recommendations to be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's been some circulation of potential amendments to this relating to age limits and signage, but before we get on to that, does anybody have any questions on the rest of the policy for officers?
I'd just like to ask, how prevalent are incidences of drivers not having signage on their vehicles? How often does this result in enforcement action and what are the penalties for not having the correct signage when doing a job? Can bus lanes still be used, for example? Because I know a lot of drivers have talked about transport for London policies. However, my understanding is that in London you cannot use bus gates or bus lanes if you're as a private hire vehicle. So I'm not sure how applicable those arguments are, but I would expect that if you are using, they should have signage if you are using bus gates and bus lanes. So that'd be my questions.
Yeah, so I'm not kind of up to date with the legislation that happens with Transport for London. I do know that the legislation that private hires operate under is different to us. So we operate under the 76 Act, they operate under the 98 Act. So that makes reference to the discs in the windows to identify them as a private hire vehicle and that's not contained in the 76 Act. In regards to using bus lanes, I think that's something that may need to be asked from the highways department, not licensing. I do know that the traffic regulation order in Sheffield states that vehicles must have signage as approved by Sheffield City Council. So I don't know for definite, but I'd assume that if a vehicle wanted to, you'd still use those bus lanes when not working, they'd have to have the signage attached to that vehicle, but I wouldn't know for absolutely certain. I think we need to seek further clarification on that point. And just in regards to the enforcement point in which you made, we've got some stats from the last 12 months, so from the 1st of October last year to the 31st of October this year, we've issued 195 defect notices to private hire vehicles. The majority of those defect notices are in regards to non-displayed signage or incorrectly displayed signage. The current policy states that if vehicles are seen three times without displaying signage, that they are referred to the licenced subcommittee. And that has happened more recently within the kind of last three to four months that vehicles, what the licensees have been referred to licensing subcommittee. And various different sanctions have been delivered to those licensees, did not open the same sanction.
Mark?
A specific technical question with regards to the zero emission capability of cars. I'm assuming that that means self-charging petrol or diesel vehicles. But that doesn't necessarily mean that when they're in the clean air zone or anything like that, they'd have to operate off electrics only. So I'm kind of unsure as to how that actually helps the policy going forward and with our net zero policies, I'm not quite sure how this all fits in there. Would like some clarification on that please.
Yeah, I can't really provide too much technical advice unfortunately, but I think what we want to move towards is more hybrid type and electric vehicles to help the wider air quality ambitions of the council. So this is in regards to the net zero kind of ambition for 2030. I think what we're looking for is to remove those really unhealthy diesel and petrol vehicles that are licensed in Sheffield. However, it must be said that the private hire fleet is quite modern compared to probably other cities and particularly the Hackney carriage fleet, which are currently licensed, those vehicles are much, much older. So, yeah, there's different things that we could have looked to impose in terms of electric and hydrogen vehicles being part of that category, but what we wanted to make it broader so it was easy to understand for licensees purchasing vehicles, that it was either diesel and petrol and those are the vehicles that fit into that zero emission capable kind of criteria. I do know that other authorities, particularly the Transport for London, have certain limits on what is classed as a zero emission vehicle in terms of plug-in hybrids, self-charging hybrids have to travel 70 miles to be classed as a zero emission capable vehicle. But I think we wanted to make it simpler for licensees when they're looking for a vehicle to make that decision. Can't be any more technical, I'm afraid, because I wouldn't want to give incorrect information out to members.
So that's part of the thing that does worry me at the moment is, so from certain people that I've spoken to who have decided to opt out of the trade at the moment, it's that unpredictability of the ask. And I get where you're coming from, that we try to make it easier and simpler, but to many who are making significant purchases for vehicles now, the fact that the goals could change within the next five years and they're possibly looking for longer term purchases, certainly if we're looking at a seven-year commitment here, if we review this in five years, they'd be worried about what that means for the residual value of that vehicle going forward. So I'm a little bit unsure on some elements of this because I'm not quite sure. For me, I know where you're coming from, the greater flexibility gives greater scope and greater opportunity, but it also gives greater uncertainty and anxiety to the taxi trade itself. So some elements of that I feel concerned about.
If I can buzz in, Mark, I think it's a perfectly fair point to raise and I think by trying to set a policy for 2027 as the policy does, we're trying to give certainty, as I say, so by 2027, it's all ZEC, which does include hybrids, of which are about a quarter of the private hire fleet already. So it's not like it's an out-of-reach, impossible thing. But obviously the longer ahead you set the policy, the more you're speculating as to what the circumstances will be when it comes around, but you do give more certainty. Sorry, I'm just waffling now, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, I think I misunderstood your original point. So are you talking about the introduction of those vehicles for 2027, Briar House talking about those people purchasing vehicles now? So what we're proposing is if a vehicle's purchased now, it will still be licensed for that period of time. So come 2027, we automatically revoke those licences or ask people to change, we still honour the period in which they would have still been able to licence that vehicle. So if they bought a vehicle now, for example, and we're proposing it be licensed for 12 years for a ZEC, that would still continue come 2027, we wouldn't ask them to replace that particular vehicle. They could run it for 12 years and then make another kind of decision on what vehicle they want to purchase moving forwards. So we wouldn't be asking people to swap vehicles come 2027.
Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you Chair, I'm not sure that this is the right time to raise some of the issues, shut me down if it's not. We have very good standards in Sheffield and we are supported by the taxi trade in that, who are very loyal to our city and to the standards. It does concern me that not all of the taxi trade are able to operate under these standards and so go elsewhere in the country to get their licence. And they then come back and operate here and they can operate without door stickers, any age of condition of vehicle, proper checks and training. So it's actually quite difficult to be a taxi driver, what's it quite difficult, it's harder to be a taxi driver in Sheffield than it is in operating under the Sheffield licence than any other. So what I'm wondering is whether we can do something like Southampton have done and have, they have Southampton-only bus lanes for taxis. Can we do something like that in Sheffield, do you think? Possible, I don't know whether this is a transport issue or whether it's something that we can actually do with the existing rules and regulations, but perhaps redefining what the Sheffield badge is for taxis. Does this make sense?
It makes perfect sense, Council, and I fully understand that the comments that you're making right now, we want to support the local Sheffield taxi trade. We also need to protect the customers that are using those vehicles as well. In regards to the use of bus lanes and the vehicles that can use them, you're correcting saying it's not a licensing function, it sits with transport. I think in limiting certain vehicles to use bus lanes has to be thought about very carefully that we're impacting customers in that decision. So for customers to book a vehicle through one of the operators' licences with us and Sheffield licensed vehicle turns up and can use those bus lanes, it costs X amount of money. And then they book a vehicle the next day and a vehicle licence with another authority turns up and can't use those bus lanes, the fare might differ between one day and the next. And I think those things that we need to consider, but I think we ultimately do need to protect the licence trade in Sheffield as the licensing authority, I think that's really, really important.
Yes, so Chair, I'm just wondering how we can sort of progress this, that there seems to be some consideration we need to take within licensing as to whether this is appropriate, but also at some point, if we feel it is, to take this to transport to say, you know, how can we implement this?
So thank you Cliff, yeah, I think, you know, let's take this off. The thing that I'm not clear about here is if, yes, it's a matter of the transport, who gets to use the bus lanes, but if the policy already is private hire vehicles with Sheffield-approved signage, then it is a matter of enforcement of those bus lanes, which I believe is a matter for Wasteland Street scene. So, you know, if we have the technology to do it, we could, you know, check the signage, you know, on vehicles using the bus lanes and send them fines if they have Wolverhampton signs that are not approved by Sheffield, potentially, and we don't have to go to transport in that case. So I think we need, can we ask yourselves to have conversations with parking type enforcement and with transport, work out how it is we progress this? Because if it is just a case of being able to enforce on the basis of signage, then we don't need to go to transport, transport is very busy. Possibly we can do it, but obviously we should consult them because it is a transport-related issue. I would, my view is that we should also allow neighbouring authorities taxis to use the bus lanes, that we don't want to start getting into turf wars with Rotherham and we can't use yours and you can't use theirs because it just makes everybody's lives more difficult because it's quite legitimate to go across a border carrying a passenger and then to pick up another passenger on the way back, I don't see any problem with that. It's those who are licensed and local authorities, you know, tens or hundreds of miles away that are not, I think are abusing the system. So is that an ask that you can take away, that we have this conversation with whichever departments we need so we can progress this?
Yeah, we can certainly have conversations with our colleagues about how to progress this if that's the wish of the committee.
I think, yeah, I think it is. Mike?
Thank you Chair, and I do think that proposal is very sensible that Cliff has raised there. I appreciate that, well, I want to thank you for bringing this report together, it will have been many hours of work to consolidate government legislation with updating hours, consulting particularly the representatives from the taxi trade and individual drivers and also the users, particularly from those with disabilities. So to give the latter a fair shout, we do have an amendment coming to us which suggests on page 324, item G, where it says the operator is responsible for ensuring that their system, where possible, identifies job bookings with specific requirements and so on. But it's taking out, there's an amendment proposal that suggests that we take out the where possible.
Not interrupting you Mike, the, yeah, page 324 in the appendix bundle, not 324 in the original bundle, yes, I mean, that did come up in Mr Martin's question and we've had legal advice that we can't implement that amendment today, that we can look at it going forward and we can work out perhaps in greater clarity what the ask of operators should be, but this clause doesn't really do that. Is Licensing happy to take that away and have a think about it in some more detail?
Yes, absolutely Chair, we can look into that point.
Yes, yes, it was that reassurance I was looking for, thank you Chair.
With regards to the question we have from Mr Calder as well, one of the things that does worry me, because I don't use taxis often, I'm quite ignorant of this, I'll be quite honest with you. However, I'm quite mindful that there are significant providers who do not offer telephone as an option, it's digital by default only. But we don't have legislation over what we can do about that, it isn't in our gift to mandate others. And this comes back to all the policies that we've got before us and the bit about allowing only taxis here, how do we give them a competitive opportunity over those licensed by cheaper and more irresponsible authorities? I'll go that far as to say they don't care if they complain about it. What are we doing, what can we do as an organisation, as a city, as a council to try and bring pressure to bear on government to make sure that they start making these standards national? Because to an extent, we can do whatever we want to in this place and we can set, like for instance, we're arguing here today, which I find a bit disjointed, that permanent signage on the outside of a car makes a car safer. When, I get that because if you're getting into a car, you want to make sure you're getting to the right car. I fully understand that, if you're visually impaired, it doesn't help. However, if you're getting into the car, you want some certainty that it's the right car. However, once you're inside that car, the signage does not then really protect you against anything that happens, nor does it protect the driver against the passenger being abusive or otherwise. So the sheer fact that we're saying for passenger safety, we need better signage on the outside, but we don't need cameras on the inside. but we don't need cameras on the inside because that can be optional, seems a bit incon- inconsistent to me. But by the same token, I also understand we don't want to penalise the trade. And we're not saying that taxi drivers are bad people. They're mostly good family individuals who would hate to think that anybody else would get in their car and get abused or anything. But by the same token, I don't want to see mum or dad or son get abused by a driver, by a by a passenger. So so I find this whole policy quite difficult at the moment. And I'm kind of thinking that we're almost whistling into the wind to an extent, because without something from central government, and I think maybe it could be on us as a committed to right to government to put pressure on them, and maybe maybe joining with our other core cities to bring about better standards and better consistency across the nation. Like, for instance, if you wanted to make a car quite distinct, you wouldn't necessarily allow it to be covered in adverts. You'd have it as as a white car with a black stripe down the middle, as other authorities have maybe done. That may, it stands out quite even to the, if you're not, if you're blind, it doesn't help, but if you're visually impaired, it's still quite a striking vehicle. So so this whole policy at the moment feels a bit bit jumbled to me. And and I know there's a lot of work that's gone into it and I know you're you're working from where we are, but and there's many elements of this I I I struggle with. But but maybe maybe that's something we should take up, Chair, and and certainly from the way you're nodding, it looks like a a more consistent government, central government policy would help for sure.
Yeah, I'll I'll come back. The easiest thing for us as a licensing authority, and I think most licensing authorities, would be some national legislation. It'd be a rewriting of the legislation with which we're working too. So in regards to this policy, it's the legislation we worked with from nineteen seventy six, and it's not been updated since that time. We've had the statutory standards that came in in twenty twenty, which do does give us a few more tools with which to work with. But it it doesn't go far enough in in terms of, that's why we have differing standards across the country, and it's left to each local authority to set those standards which they think will work for for the city or or the town in which those vehicles are licensed. But yeah, ultimately, until there there, until there are national standards, we we can only work with with what we've got in front of us, unfortunately.
Yes, I mean, I'd I'd agree with that. I mean, sometimes it's a case of be careful what you wish for, because some of the national standards that we've brought in with the driver policy were a little bit controversial with drivers, but I think I think, you know, I think possibly that the the piece of work on bus lanes is the sort of thing actually that enables us to have a bit more bite with our standards and and not, you know, and not to not not to let our race to the bottom. Are there any more general questions or can we move on to the to the specific issues? Okay, so can we just move to the issue of the ages of vehicles, which is, I have circulated on a piece of paper. Got no idea what it is here. So item one, age limits. So in page thirty forty three of the appendix bundle, section three deals with the age criteria on first registration for private hire vehicles. And having again consulted with legal, I've been advised that we have not had kind of sufficient consultation on the question of moving from five years to four for petrol and diesel vehicles. But what I would suggest is that the amendment I'd like to I'd like to put before the committee here is that we move, that the 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 change from five years to four for petrol and diesel comes in on first January twenty twenty five, because that is the date we consulted on. Actually, we consulted on a complete balance on petrol and diesel and everything had to be zero emission capable. So it would be four years from twenty twenty five, but would remain at five years. And then the zero emission capable vehicles would be first registration for vehicles that have to be under seven years. So this would allow another two years' worth of zero emission capable vehicles to be registered as private hire vehicles. And the intention of this is not only to just push the balance in favour of zero emission capable vehicles, because a great many of the new vehicles coming on are zero emission capable already are, are generally generally self-charging hybrids. And that is a good thing. And the 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 evidence that suggests is that it only takes a small nudge to actually move to largely those vehicles. And and allowing vehicles up to seven years to be registered would 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 make the, would 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 open the, you know, open a large number of vehicles at a at keener prices drivers wishing to do that. The proposal is already in the policy for the upper age limit to go to twelve years. So you're still looking at the as a minimum five usable years, whatever kind of vehicle you buy. So 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 that's the logic to doing that. Can I put that, is that, yeah, A, is that understood and B, can I put that open to comments? Mark?
My my main concern here is we're looking at private licensing as as such here. It's the it's the effect of unintended consequences that I'm most concerned about is what are we going to do to make sure, how do we establish a criteria to which those that need assistance assistance were moving around can have private hire vehicles that will accommodate their chairs and such like going forward? Because this policy at the moment, I I get that. We we, what we're looking to do here and we're looking to say, right, private taxi trade's under stress because of the conditions, the market conditions and everything else. So we're going to push people towards compliance, which means we'll push people towards compliance in in effectively standard saloon cars and and otherwise. So how do we then make sure that there is going to be sufficient provision for those that need better vehicles that accommodate chairs and such like? Because because, yeah, I know that hackney carriages aren't perfect for everybody. If you've got a bad back, a regular car is probably better for you. However, how do we make sure that those people that can't move around or or can only move with significant levels of assistance are accommodated for in this policy? Or is that a separate policy? Am I misunderstanding?
I think I think you may be struggling to have a, because we're not, because we're not dealing with hackney carriages today at all. The number of private hire vehicles that can accommodate wheelchairs, I understand, is is pretty tiny. I don't know if you can advise us on that. And whether, I mean, I I I do recall, yeah, no, I don't know if you can advise us on that at all, the issue of wheelchairs in private hire vehicles.
I can give you some numbers, but they won't be wholly accurate. I think the number is probably two.
I mean, I don't know if that, it it's not, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, Mark. I don't think, I I think on that basis, I think we can say that the age criteria in terms of ZECs for private hires is not going to impact wheelchair accessibility of the private hire fleet at all. I think that's probably a fair a fair conclusion. Is that, does that answer your question?
It it kind of does, but it's still, so part of the elements for me on on this entire process is that we've never really considered taxis as part of the public transport network. You've got trains, you've got buses, and then you've got everyone else and and the car users. And 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 we've never really given significant cognizance to to the to the services that our taxi drivers provide to our city by helping those who aren't able to move around to move around freely as part of our equalities requirements. So I'm kind of thinking, I know we're trying to move our policies forward and we're trying to move them forward in a cognisant way that also accommodates our drivers. But I'm not entirely sure as around what the overview and vision of this entire process is, and I am concerned that that we wind up unintentionally driving everyone out of hackney carriages into private hire vehicles and then not being able to provide the transport systems that our city requires and that our citizens require. And it's a difficult balancing point. And I and I don't have the answers here, I'll be honest with you, but I'm worried that the unintended consequences are that is going to be an ex- acceleration towards that position that those with impaired movements will get more disadvantaged.
I'll let you in a moment, Tim. I just want to be clear what Mark, you're arguing for. Are you saying that we ought to we ought to consider making private hire vehicles more expensive? So that, because that's, because the implication is we're making private hire vehicles too cheap and that and and therefore people will move out of hackney carriages. I mean, is that, I mean, is that what you want us to consider?
What what I'm suggesting here is that there isn't sufficient attention paid towards how we balance off the marketplace for provision for those needing to use our taxis across the whole policy. And what I'm saying is I don't want to make the cars more expensive because that prohibits people going into the trade and earn a living. However, the way that we're setting up the policy may wind up disadvantaging a huge part of it. I I I'm just wondering, how do we how do we rethink the policy as it is? Is that what we needed? To make it more co- consistent and coherent across?
I think, I think, I, look, I think what you're raising is a really important point. That that is that we would like to have, you know, more private hire vehicles that are wheelchair accessible and that private hire operators to offer that as a service. We have two, as we've been told. I I think it 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 would, there there would be a logic to saying in the policy, look, we should give you the extra incentive, extra tolerance on age limits if you have a wheelchair accessible private hire vehicle. I don't know how to put this. The licensing subcommittee is within its rights to grant policies, to grant licences to wheelchair accessible vehicles because it it takes that view as well, even beyond those age limits. That is something it might do. Whether it has done that or not, I can't say, because those those meetings are confidential.
Sorry, Chair, is that is that is that something we as a group, through a working party or whatever, could potentially take forward?
And if you want to come in, Craig, I mean, is is this something that could be written into policy in terms of wheelchair accessible private hire vehicle? I mean, in a sense, we're using age limits to try and incentive incentivize changes and and councillor Jones is quite right to raise, why aren't we using therefore them to incentivize a change towards wheelchair accessible vehicles? We could have, we could, we might, if we'd have thought of this, we might have put that, something like that in the policy, might we? Can you, do you want, I mean, do you want to come back?
Yeah, so in terms of the vehicle policies, what we propose is much the same as what it is now with a few amendments to make it easier for for the trade to purchase vehicles. One of those being the tinted windows, for example. It's expensive to replace those windows that don't meet our specification. We are reviewing the hackney carriage policy at at present, and I think what we need to do is probably incentivize within that policy, easier ways for the trade to purchase more affordable vehicles. So we've we've got certain standards now which only allow side loading access. Those those vehicles, such as the L E B C, are around seventy thousand pounds to purchase. They're extremely expensive. So probably we need to explore different kind of models within the hackney carriage specification to encourage people back into the hackney carriage trade. The private hire policy deals with just the private hire vehicles. We think we've got a fair policy in that respect. However, we could look in the future to to have some kind of incentives for people who do purchase a wheelchair accessible vehicle. It's not obvious to have been proposed in this one, but we can look at the hackney carriage provision when that comes to discrepancy next year.
With demographics moving away, they are, we are going to have a much greater need of private hire vehicles that are that have wheelchair access and all the other accompanying things. So we've got to look at ways and means that we incentivize a greater number of vehicles that have that access and perhaps a task and finish group or something to have a look at the just to have a look around this particular part of the policy and how we can incentivize and also a a and increase the the number of vehicles that are available to people that need specially adapted vehicles to be out of access, should I say. And I think I think that's something we need to, we do need to, as a very, it's a very sort of particular part of the policy that we need to, we need to look at separately to to as a as an amendment to this down the line. Is is, would that be appropriate?
I think we always need to look at better provision for disabled people, whether that's in the carriage policy or the private hire policy. I also think it's worth, and I've spoken to Mr Martin on this, I think in the past, about having more jointed conversations with disability groups, us as an authority and the private hire operators, about how we can better support people to move around the city who do have disabilities. And it may be something that the private hire operators need to look at themselves. Do they need to purchase a fleet of wheelchair accessible vehicles that work for them? And and get licences to drive those vehicles so we can always guarantee that there are always those vehicles available, which we can't really do within policy as an authority. But I think we've we've got some private hire operators in Sheffield, international private hire operators that have seen they've got a lot of money behind them. Maybe we need to be speaking to them about how they can help us to increase disability provision in in those vehicles which drive in Sheffield but around the rest of England as well. But in terms of your question, I think it is something we we definitely do need to look at. And I think it's a wider conversation than just us as an authority, but different services around the council as well that could all, you know, import and then seek to come to some kind of position in the future.
Thanks. Yeah, so in terms of going back to the amendment that's being proposed at the moment, I had, did have some concerns about the previous amendment as proposed in term, because it proposed delay of implementation, but bearing in mind the the advice that we've now got, I'd be happy to support this amendment.
Thank you, Alexi. Thank you for bringing us back to the amendment, because, I mean, I am conscious we're now at quarter to four. We do have two and a half, we can extend beyond two and a half hours, but I would rather not extend beyond two and a half hours for this item, because we have more items to come. Is that, does anybody have any further comments specifically on on the first amendment on age limits? If not, can can I take that that's agreed by the committee? That's excellent. So that is the, that is that the at the age of first registration, the demisters have got a copy and the the copy's on the table, but it's that the that the the vehicle should be under four years of age when first licensed from, if it's after January twenty twenty five, before then it remains at five years. And obviously, for zero emission capable, it's seven years, up to seven years at age of first registration. Excellent. Okay, so, yeah.
Could I ask just one slight alteration to that? The bit, the bit that I was really concerned about before when you gave clarity was, anything registered before that date in twenty twenty five is still subject to the existing twelve-year licence and will, that licence will be seen out. Is that is that correct?
I think I understand your point. Basically, any vehicle that's licensed now in return of zero emission, so if someone's got a zero emission capable vehicle now, it will be granted a licence for twelve years. So if it's granted for nine at the moment, that will increase to twelve. And I think this amendment also encompasses that that amendment as well.
Yeah, I mean, as I understood it, that you, they, I mean, these are these are the ages at first registration and that it's a different set of age limits for for, you know, how long you can go. And it's nine and twelve years as proposed in the policy. So if you buy a vehicle now, if you register a vehicle now, it can continue until it's nine or twelve years old, depending on what vehicle is, under the new proposal. So so some vehicles are getting extra three years if we agree with this policy.
I I was just hoping that'd be kind of spelt out clearly for people, because it wasn't something that I understood.
I mean, it's it's clearly in the, it's it's in, it's in here, but it's it's not the point that's amending. It's the only the amendment only refers to the age limit at first registration, not the final age limit, the age you can keep using a vehicle until. Yeah, that's a different age limit. Okay, so that's why, that's why it's not in the amendment. But yeah, it's a worthwhile clarification.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to clarify. The the age of first registration that the committee just focused on an amendment to the policy for was four years coming in from the first of January twenty twenty five. The first, the age of first registration being able to be seven years for ZEC vehicles. Are you wishing to make that from the first of February when the policy comes into force? Thank you. Cheers.
That's clear, yes. Again, the 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 rationale of the amendment is to is to incentivize the transition to cleaner vehicles. And I think it's pretty clear that, you know, a six-and-a-half-year-old ZEC is going to be cleaner, better for air quality, better all round than a, you know, a four-and-a-half-year-old or a five-and-a-half-year-old, a three-and-a-half-year-old petrol and diesel vehicle. Thank you. Thank you for that. So, sorry, amendments two and three relate to signage. So just to to just to clarify, just to explain what they are. Again, you have them on paper in front of you, but for for the benefit of the audience. Amendment two changes on page three hundred and sixty of the of the appendices pack. And it basically, it changes the word permanently to the word securely in reference to the front door sign being the one with the council crest. And it also makes the 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 same change elsewhere in the document, but same, you know, the same, with the same effect where 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 securely also appears. Then amendment three is to, is where where the current wording regarding the rear door sign, which is already securely affixed, where it says contain the name of the operator. It it changes it to contain the name of the operator's, or operator brackets S. So it's it's that signage on the rear door, you know, can can indicate multiple operators. That's, those are the two changes relating to signage. And obviously, we've, you know, I I I suppose in the in the rationale for considering this, because we are making an amendment to officer recommendations, and that's not something, again, not something to be done lightly. But we are conscious of the representations regarding But we are conscious of the representations regarding, um, the safety of vehicles when they're not i- in use, the safety of vehicles left overnight and so on. And I think we're also conscious of the fact that we are requiring stickers of signs on both doors on each side. And that, to my mind, mitigates the risk of a secure sign coming off in that there's still going to be another sign on that side of the vehicle. So, you know, if there's, if there's no signs on the side of a vehicle, you know, there's no excuse. As you come to the licensing, I'm sorry it fell off. Well, you, you were meant to have two, weren't you? So, um, that's the, that's the rationale as far as, it's in my mind for that, for that amendment. And, um, the, the second one, the multiple operator amendment, again, the rationale is that we have in the previous policy allowed, continued to allow drivers to work for multiple operators. We recognize the problems with that, but, um, we didn't feel, if you remember, it was really within our powers to prevent them. Um, and that, you know, that they are self-employed people and can work for, for whom they choose. Um, so the, the, the rationale again to allowing the, the, the rear door sign is to reflect this reality. And I don't think requiring drivers to get out of the vehicle every, and the representations have said this. Um, requiring drivers to get out of the vehicle when they, when they take a job to change the signs on the rear doors is, is a reasonable thing to ask. It would, you know, among other things, it would, it would put them at risk of being, you know, and people come along and causing problems. It would also, um, delay every arrival by an extra minute, which is, you know, might not sound long, but if it's every single journey is an extra minute late, it's a, that's, that's a much worse, um, service to, to the public of Sheffield, isn't it? So to their, to my mind, those are the rationales for those two amendments and I'll throw them open to, to the room for comments. Alexi.
Are we going to deal with them individually or both at the same time?
Still with them both at the same time, introducing them both at the same time, but, um, you know.
Um, well, in terms of the sec, the secure door signs, I think we've had a lot of correspondence outlining the huge safeguarding issues with signage being absent. Uh, and we've also heard that sometimes the signage is absent even though it is mandated at the moment. Um, so missing signage, there's a huge list of people that have given submissions that I could read uh, about safeguarding concerns. But missing signage makes it more difficult for teachers, parents, visually impaired people, carers, medical professionals, others to easily see that they, or the people that they're caring for are getting into a licensed vehicle. Uh, so I'm just worried that if permanent signage is not mandated, that people will continue not to necessarily put their signage on, making it more unsafe for passengers, especially vulnerable people. And it also may lead to licensing committee being really clogged up with this issue coming to them. Uh, however, if the, if permanent signage is mandated, um, maybe there could be exemptions for people who have, uh, have got persistent issues with their cars being targeted or uh, where they, where they are based. Uh, people have got evidence and crime reference numbers and evidence of damage and that could be managed by the licensing committee. Um, so I mean, again, the, the point about, um, licensed vehicles not being able to use bus lanes, I think if they shouldn't, if they're not having displaying the signage, then they shouldn't be using bus lanes.
I, I don't think we can preempt the decision on bus lanes today. I think we need to consider this on its merits without regard to that. Um, but sorry, yes, thank you. Um, Mike.
Chair, thank, thank you. Um, it, it is a difficult one, this. Um, but we've had, we've had representations from the, from the tax, the, um, private licensed trade. Uh, and, and they have produced evidence of some of the adverse consequences um, of where they, they, they've been targeted, um, by criminals. I, I do think that cha- changing the word to secure, um, is, is something that our, our group will support. Um, and I'm pretty sure that word will get out that when taxes turn up without any signage displayed, um, people will be reluctant to use those vehicles. I certainly would be reluctant to use a vehicle that didn't have clear signage displayed. Um, but there, there is a tried and tested practice of using magnetic, um, grips um, to the side of the doors and, and I, I have no problem with that continuing. There's, there's, there's the lesser of two evils. Um, on, I, we didn't cover the top of, um, the amendments page, did we? I'm looking at number three. Um, we, we would support the, um, the proposed wording, um, which changes the word operator to operator brackets S, closed brackets. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. So I've, I've got Mark and I did see, who else did I see over here after Mark turns it to Tim? Okay, Mark first and then Tim.
Well, we, we're just telling drivers that from a cutoff point, uh, albeit with a, um, a twilight zone put in there, that they're going to have to renew their vehicles potentially more frequently. We're then going to be telling people they're going to have to take rivets and potentially put signs through the car doors, which they'll then have to remove in a period going forward when they try to try to sell that vehicle on. It, it feels punitive, um, for me. The other, the other element of permanently affixed signs, uh, this hasn't happened to me, but I could imagine this being the case because I know that taxi drivers are fastidious, they don't want to get into accidents. But as a cyclist, if I'm on a road and someone's got a magnetic strip on their car and it's sort of dangling off and it hits me, it's just going to give me a bruise and it'll probably come off the car. If it's a permanently attached signage that somehow has been panged and bent and the driver's unaware of it and he comes past me, it's going to rip my leg. So for me, I, I, I feel that though I understand the security about who's getting into which car, I feel that the securely affixed magnetic strips are less likely to cause damage. Um, and, and also less likely to damage the taxi driver's pocket going forward. Certainly given the fact that they will have to dispose of their vehicles more early due to the policies we're giving. So I, I would, I would rather definitely see secure rather than permanent.
Sorry, Mark, I, I'm completely lost now. I don't think we're asking people to dispose of their vehicles earlier. The change in this policy creates an extra three years for, for one type of vehicle and keeps, keeps the other, the other limit at nine years. You know, so I don't think, I don't accept that's what we're having to do. Obviously, if you want to, you know, if you're not clean air zone compliant, um, then you may want to change your vehicle. But, um, you raise a point. I mean, I, I interpreted permanent to mean a sticker, not a riveted on sign. And a sticker, of course, isn't actually permanent, is it? A sticker can be taken off. Um, have we, have we chosen the right word in the policy when we say permanent?
Um, probably not if we've had comments in that regard. Um, I, I, the word permanent was used as a permanent sticker. That, that's what we meant by that, not, not an etching on the vehicle or someone riveting a, a sign on the vehicle. I don't think we'd want to damage a, a vehicle in that respect because selling it would be probably nearly impossible. Um, so yeah, the permanent was permanently affixed, a sticker that can be taken off. Um, however, those types of stickers are removed from vehicles with heat, I expect. Secure would be the, this, what, what we have at present, so they can be taken off and, um, put back on as and when they wish. But as and when they're working and when they're not working.
Tim, did you indicate, I'm sorry, was it Cliff? I, I saw a hand over there. Cliff, Cliff, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, um, I, I mean, the, 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 the current situation is we have secure attachment, not, not permanent attachment. And we, we do get a trickle of, um, of, of, of drivers being pulled before subcommittee. Um, by and large, I, I think the per, the not the permanent, the, the secure attachment does work. And it seems a shame for the, for, because of the few that can't make it work, that we're forcing all of, um, all of the taxi trade to have them permanently affixed. Um, with the potential of damage, but also it, it, you know, if, if it's attached by adhesive, you know, when they come to sell the car and they take the thing off, they're going to have to have, have a repaint of the, of the door or that. I mean, it, you know, it will, will damage the vehicle as well. So my, my inclination is to, is, is, is to stay with, um, with secure, um, fixing of, um, of signage rather than, rather than permanent. Because I just think it's, it, it's perhaps not proportional, give, you know, given the, uh, the, the, the number of cases that we actually get.
Thank you. Alexi.
Thanks. Um, yeah, just like to, uh, well, I think I've made my, my point regarding the permanent. Uh, but again, in terms of the, um, operator signs, I do think as well that it, there, there are huge safeguarding implications if that signage is input or even if it shows more than one operator. Um, I can think of a personal example, having worked in sort of residential, uh, children's residential care. If, if you can see that a car that someone's getting into is, if it's unmarked, if it's not got a clear operator logo, that makes, I mean, it's much harder to trace, for example, if something does happen. Uh, I think it's really important as well for people on a night out or people who are visually impaired to be able to see clearly their operator logo and know which car that they're, they're getting into, the right car. Uh, so I, I do think it does need to be a single s- sign for that. Uh, although I do accept that that one, because drivers will be able to work for multiple operators that they are, they can change that logo. Um, I'd just like to ask the officers as well in terms of, um, evidence from police or operators on how, how mu- how prevalent the problems are, uh, in terms of, uh, vehicles being targeted either by, uh, criminals in terms of robberies or, um, damage in terms of stem throwing and things like that.
I, I can't speak for operators, they may have information themselves, but I think in terms of Councilor Otten's point in regards to one of the questions, we, we did contact South Yorkshire Police, um, and they couldn't provide us with any evidence of vehicles being targeted or being broken into. That's not to say it hasn't happened. Maybe it's under reporting or maybe for various other reasons, that, that's why we're not aware of it. But we, we haven't received any, we don't receive information fro- from licensees, um, in regards to this vehicle's being targeted, um, and if we do, it's, it's rarely. Again, that's not to say it doesn't happen. Uh, we can only go on the information that is, that we receive from licensees and the police and other organizations. It's, it's few and far between.
Yes, Councilor Milano.
Thank you Chair. Um, just on the point of, I suppose, taxi drivers being targeted. Um, I'm not sure how it works with reporting to the police, but I've had a number of caseworks come through from residents who were taxi drivers who live probably like two streets down from me, um, who have unfortunately been targeted. And the damage that's happened has been quite excessive, so it's been like a completely, you know, smashed front windshield or window, which means that, you know, the driver can't work for the week whilst it's being repaired. Um, and from what I've been told, you know, a small window costs about three hundred pounds to repair, the big, um, front window costs about a thousand pounds. Um, and, you know, it is a shame, but unfortunately, I suppose, what, you know, what we know is that the police system is quite clogged up at the moment. We don't have as many PCSOs and officers who are able to come out, um, as fast as we would like to. And as much as I understand that that's a criminal, a criminal issue, um, I suppose I'm, yeah, I'm wary of supporting permanent signage if, if that means that drivers aren't able to take any sort of precaution to protect themselves and their families. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. So just to clarify, are these, these caseworks related to cars left overnight and, and, and broken into? Uh, or cars driven around having thrown, because we've had both.
So, um, East Bank Road, which I saw was, you know, within the agenda pack and like the appendices, so that falls in within my ward. So that's cars who drive up East Bank Road, um, which I live just off. But the specific incidents I'm speaking about are cars that are left overnight or where they're parked up for a couple of hours and left unattended because, you know, they live in like a block of flats and they've parked it on the adjacent road. And that's when these instances have taken place.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any more comment, oh, so, Mark.
Um, would the police specifically record a crime as targeted against a taxi driver or against a works vehicle, do you know? Because I'm not entirely sure that police statistics is that, um, um, responsive to actually, or sophisticated to actually capture that element of crime. So it's a valid point, is there any statistics to support it, but I'm not sure the statistics are gathered. Um, certainly anecdotally, I've heard of taxi vehicles being, being targeted, uh, for, for various reasons as well.
I, I think we'd ask, have to ask the police that particular question. We, we've obviously received responses through the consultation, um, exercise about vehicles being targeted by stones, bricks, eggs and so forth, and instances of vehicles being broken into. Um, in terms of the information we've had from the police, I wouldn't know if, if it's recorded. It may just be recorded as a car has been targeted, not, not a taxi. So I, I wouldn't like to speak on behalf of the police in terms of the recording of those particular incidents.
Thanks, yeah. I just, I just, I do want to be clear, there are two different kinds, types of incidents in, in, in the representations that were made to us. And one relates obviously to vehicles left overnight, um, or just left and broken into. And obviously, well, the intention of a, a, a secure rather than permanent front sticker is that those cars would be at, at a lesser risk. There is also the cases of, 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 um, stones being thrown at vehicles in certain parts of the city. Um, you know, obviously that, that is, you know, that is a, a, a different class of problem and it does apply to other vehicles as well. Um, and whether, whether, you know, you know, removing signage to reduce the risk to taxis is, 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 is an ask that has been made of us. But I think we're, we're clearly not, not prepared to meet that because of the importance of signage in terms of public safety. So it is worth saying and worth being clear that we, we understand there's two different, two different, um, cases of, 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 of damage to vehicles. Are there any more comments on these two amendments? And okay, are they, Alexi, I think you indicated you're, you're opposed, so do we need to put this to a show of hands? Can I see a show of hands in favour of amendments two and three? And against? And that is, and those are carried. Thank you. So the, on the distributed piece of paper, there is an amendment for, that is the, uh, the amendment, um, coming from, um, from James Martin, that is not, uh, the legal advice is that we can't do that, so I don't propose to put that. Um, sorry, yeah, I'll come to you in a second, Alexi. So I'm not proposing that we, we debate that further. Um, it has been, you know, we have had that advice. I hadn't had the advice at the time that I put together this document, which is why, why it appears on there. Alexi.
So I've got two proposed amendments that, um, I did circulate this morning, so apologies for it being late. Uh, so the, the first one, um, is for this policy to be evaluated twelve months after implementation in order for the licensing service to determine and this committee whether, whether it is effective. Um, so whatever, we've, well, we've, we've decided, quite like some of the substantial amendments. Uh, but I'm, in light of that, I think it's crucial that this is reviewed following year of operations. Uh, for example, are licensing committee getting lots of hearings due to signage not being displayed? Is there an increase in safeguarding concerns or incidents? Is, is there an increase in theft or A S B or decrease in stem throwing, for example? Um, are, are rare disabled people be a- able to access vehicles? Is there an implication, um, for, for people who are, you know, particularly sighted or, um, uh, or, uh, safety in the city centre, for example, uh, with people getting into unsigned vehicles? And could we also consider in any review some of the points that James has made regarding providing the booking service? Um, or, and the requirement to ensure pre-booking for elderly and disabled people. So that's the first amendment for a twelve month, uh, evaluation after implementation. And the second one, I, I'd like to, I've had them submissions from various, uh, climate groups and activists um, relating to, um, the changing of, as, as of January twenty twenty seven, all newly licensed vehicles must be zero emissions. Um, and I'd like to put an amendment to revert back to the original, what was in the original motion, uh, proposal, which was as of January twenty twenty five. Um, that's because Sheffield has a commitment to net zero by twenty thirty. Um, I think we're, we're probably not doing enough to meet that target and watering down this requirement is, is a small step in the wrong direction. Um, I think everyone benefits from reduced emissions and relish, reduced air pollutants. Not least drivers and people who are frequently using the vehicles. Uh, we should take, encourage everyone to take advantage of the grants and loans that are currently available and transition as quickly as possible to low emissions vehicles. Um, and then finally, could we can also consider that private hire vehicles when licensed need to have boot space that will allow a standard wheelchair to be able to be laid. to have boot space, that will allow a standard wheelchair to be able to be laid flat. Is that possible?
Right, so that third one wasn't something on the email you sent. So before I ask for seconders, can I, I don't know if licensing wants to comment on the question of how a policy such as this is reviewed. Yeah, can I do that, and then I'll come to you, Tim?
Yeah, so we'd normally aim to review it every five years, that's what statutory standards state, but we can review it more frequently if we wish. I think rather than probably doing a whole other, you know, process such as this, I think an evaluation of where we are in terms of the current standards may be achievable in 12 months' time. I can't commit to 12 months, we've got a lot of projects on the go at the moment, but I think if we commit to evaluating it, I don't want to commit to 12 months in case we can't stick to that, but I think an evaluation in around 12 months' time would be useful to see if it is working and has the desired effects.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not clear whether, you know, the amendment is asking us to commit to an evaluation of the whole of the policy and all of its measures, whether there are specific things that we want to see it working, specifically the things that have been changed, I suppose, and whether that is a considerably kind of lighter burden on licensing officers who have a lot to do. So I'm not clear what the, and yeah, I'm not really clear what the ask is, but I mean, I don't know, actually, Alexi, I don't know if you're satisfied with what Craig has said, and you're happy to take that away, or whether I should ask for, if you have a second.
Could it be specifically in relation to the signage part of the?
Right. I, I, I mean... So I repeat my question, do you want me to ask for a second, or are you content with what you've been offered? Greg, are you offering something to Alexi on signage, in terms of revaluation?
I think rather than evaluating the whole policy and more points, I'd be happy to evaluate the signage position.
Okay, thank you. Are you happy with that, Alexi? Okay, thank you. Your second amendment?
Could I just clarify, is that's evaluate, not reconsider? So that's to kind of look to see if it's working, and then think going forward, not to actually look to change the policy within 12 months? Is that what we're saying? Because evaluation and reconsidering and redrawing are completely different.
I think the word was evaluate, and the word wasn't reconsider, so I was fine with it as evaluate. Sorry, Tim, you did have your hand up earlier.
I was going to say, the third proposal, Alexi, is quite easy to put into if we're going to have a look at how we deal with and how we, in terms of people with disability issues, and how we increase that provision. I think that can be put straight into that, personally, about whether we look at whether wheelchairs go flat as part of that looking at, no? Because then we really are dealing with it front and centre, rather than saying, let's have a look at this at some point. If we're going to be looking at it quite, you know, at some point, you know, very soon, I'd rather it done sooner rather than later.
If you're happy with that?
Yeah.
And I'm happy to.
Sorry, I was looking for the item on boot space in the policy, I'm sure I saw something, but I hope you all read to page 354 of the appendix bundle, and found the item on boot space. So the, this, but let's go to the second amendment next. You're asking that we revert back to the, it's not the wording in the proposal, it's the wording in the policy that was consulted on, that we then, that the recommendation from licensing was then we move back from 25 to 27 for everything to be ZEC. So is there a second for that amendment? No, I don't think there is. Okay. So the third point on boot space, I don't know if licensing can help me, I'm sure there is something on boot space in the policy, can you point us to it?
There is something on boot space, and the capacity of boot has to be, I don't know off the top of my head what that is, but I can have a quick look.
I found it faster than you can search for it. Page 343, 2.4 luggage space, the dedicated accessible luggage space should not be less than 0.43 cubic metres. That doesn't sound very much, I know it's in metres rather than feet, when you're selling a car, you say in feet, don't you, because there's like 35 cubic feet in a cubic metre, aren't there? The luggage space must either be a separate lockable compartment, or there must be some suitable device fitted to prevent luggage coming to contact the passengers. I guess that doesn't say big enough for a wheelchair. Again, I, that's, I don't, I, speaking on behalf of licensing and legal, so slap me down if I'm out of line, I suspect that's something we would have to consult on before we agreed it as a policy, and therefore we can't do that today. But, I mean, I don't know, how do you want to take that away?
It'd be a whole change to the vehicle specification, so we'd have to reconsider the type. If that space isn't big enough to accommodate a wheelchair, we'd have to change the vehicle specification, which would limit the vehicles that potentially licensees could purchase, but we could see if that space does allow a foldable wheelchair to be stored.
I think I saw Mark and then Tim, Mark.
Visualizing the cubic parameters of the policy at the moment doesn't necessarily take into account the footprint of a folded wheelchair, so we would have to significantly reconsider the policy if we were to implement that, and it makes sense, so I think it comes back to what Tim says, that we look at this in a wider policy of how we ensure disabled access, because 0.43 cubic metres could be one metre by one metre by 0.43, or it could be a complete mismatch that would never accommodate anything useful of any nature.
Yeah, well, right, Mark, thank you, Tim.
My, I'm thinking about the signage mark area, which is basically, when we were talking earlier about how we incentivize to make sure that we have a larger provision for people who need disabled access, we look at how we would do that in order to incentivize growth in the provision of these type of vehicles, which we did, and putting this straight and centre as part of it into it, into what we're looking at, is this will be part of how we, one of the things we majorly look at, because not everybody needs to be in the wheelchair to get in the vehicle and sit in there, because, you know, I've travelled with a lady who basically had to be strapped in and was permanently in a wheelchair, but then there are other mechanisms we need to look at where the wheelchair can be fitted in, and how do we, as a city council, make sure that there is enough provision for this in the city, and I thought that was part of what we're looking at, and I think it needs, you know, we could specifically put it into that as well, and I know it's...
I can see, I see you have your hand up, I'm loath to bring back members of the public at this point, because it's not, you know, it's not a public meeting, it's a meeting of members. Can I also observe, actually, that there is, as far as I'm aware, not such a thing as a standard wheelchair, that there are many different wheelchairs, and so it's very, therefore difficult to design a standard round such a thing. I believe, I mean, would you be content if we took this question away as part of the whole accessibility piece of work? I think that we, I think we've agreed we're going to do, is that an acceptable outcome? Thank you. Right, in that case, if there are no more comments, can we make a decision on the policy? Recommendation is on, if I can, if I've not lost it?
Chair, would you mind terribly if I put the question on your behalf? Just so for clarity, so I know what we're...
Of course.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair. Just the first bit, point of clarification, you've agreed to take a piece of accessibility work away, the phrase task and finish group was used earlier, are you wanting to vote on a specific recommendation that a task and finish group is set up to look at accessibility?
Yes.
Okay. So, going to get the report in front of me again. So the officer recommendation was that members of the committee approve the private hire operator vehicle licensing policy to come into force on the 1st of February 2023. Following the votes you've already taken, I believe that the decision that members are seeking to vote on now is that they will adopt the private hire operator vehicle licensing policy as set out in the report with the following amendments. That the age of the vehicle on first registration, at the point that the policy comes into force on the 1st of February 2023 will be five years, that from the 1st of January 2025 it will be four years, that from the point that the policy comes into force on the 1st of February 2023, the age of the vehicle at first registration, if the vehicle is zero emission compliant, capable, thank you, is seven years, that the wording in the policy relating to front door signage be amended to securely fixed from permanent, that the wording in the policy regarding these signs on the back door is amended to refer to operator or operators with the S in brackets, to allow for multiple operators to be shown on that And that's it for that particular proposal.
Yes, there are maximum ages for those vehicles, you can, of course, register younger vehicles.
Yes, of course, Chair. So there are two other things you've wanted to vote on, but if I could ask the committee to say if that is the decision that they wish to make on that particular aspect?
Okay, so that is the question, the decision, is there any dissent? I'll take silence as affirmation. Okay, I think that's agreed.
Okay. The second proposed by the committee was that this committee establish a task and finish group to look at accessibility of the taxi trade and taxi fleet generally, with particular focus on the space for wheelchairs, but also wheelchair accessible vehicles generally.
Yes, can I put that, does that have the agreement of the meeting? I realise the last time I said, does that have the agreement of the meeting, I didn't have the mic on, so for anybody watching out there, the committee did agree the proposed driver, sorry, the proposed vehicle and operator policy with the amendments, but yes, that's agreed too, thank you.
And the final proposal from the committee is that the policy be evaluated in relation to the effectiveness of the signage 12 months after implementation.
Is that agreed? I'll take silence as assent. Yep, that's agreed.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for that, that concludes that item, thank you, everybody who came, I hope you found it worthwhile. We now move on to the next item, which, yes?
Can I request a five-minute comfort break?
Yes, I think that's probably a good idea.
Before you do that, Chair, do you want to vote to extend the meeting, because you are at 23 minutes?
Oh, yes, can we have an extension, half hour extension of the meeting, please? All those in favour? Yeah, that's great, okay. Hello and welcome back. So the next item on the agenda is the budget position. Ryan, do you want to introduce yourself and the report?
Thank you, Chair, good afternoon, everybody, my name is Ryan Keyworth, I'm the council's director of finance and commercial services. This is an update report for the committee on the council's overall budget position, but also contains a number of specific savings in a confidential appendix that relate to this committee. Chair, I'm going to try and deal with any questions, and my update will be for public consumption, but if there are any questions that require the live streaming to be switched off, I'll indicate if I think any questions from a member's going in that direction. The report shows that the Strategy and Resources Committee last month received a report where the collective submissions of the policy committees got to about £60 million of the required £80 million of savings that needed to be identified, so a massive amount of work done, not least by this committee in some very difficult circumstances. Work has been ongoing since that Strategy and Resources meeting with members in their individual political parties to firm up the political views that everybody has on the savings that were put forward by the various policy committees. The Strategy and Resources Committee meets again in a couple of weeks' time, on the 5th of December, to receive the results of that work, and the report to this committee today is part of that process. What's in the confidential appendix today is the list of savings relevant to this committee, which there is currently universal or political acceptance of, I'll not use the word support, because some of the savings, not necessarily for this committee particularly, but in other committees are far, you know, committee members are far from happy about, but nonetheless recognise that they're things we have to do to balance the budget. There is a risk, as it stands right now, that any further savings or any further decisions relevant to this committee, as savings are worked through, won't come back to this committee before Strategy and Resources, in fact, given that meeting's in two weeks' time, I think that's inevitable. There's a possibility that a final report will come back to this committee in the new year, that will set out the final position in respect to this committee when it comes to the budget, and will be presented to full council. It is actually for the Strategy and Resources Committee to recommend a budget to full council. The involvement of policy committees is something that we've tried very hard to do this year to respect the introduction of committees and the wider working across more members. So, the appendix sets out the detail for this committee, the headline report sets out the position for the council as a whole, as it was at Strategy and Resources, and I'm happy to take any questions that members have.
Thank you. So, I've really, before we move to the closed appendix, are there any questions or comments on the open part of the report? Right, thank you very much. I mean, I think, Ryan, we've probably seen versions of this report many times already, but I thank you for, obviously, thank you for coming back to us with this. So, do members wish to discuss, obviously, the items in the closed section of the report have been agreed by all parties, so I don't know if we need to have a further discussion on them. If we do, we obviously need to go into closed session, so are there members who wish to have a discussion on items in the closed session, in the closed appendix? No. In that case, I think we can go to a decision, is that right? There's nothing further to say? Thank you for waiting all this time, Ryan. Okay, so the recommendation is to note the update on the budget position in the open section of the report, and to endorse the budget proposals in the appendix. Is that agreed? I'll take silence as assent. Yep, that is agreed. Ryan?
Chair, if I can just, the recommendation is actually to endorse, not to note, if I can just...
No, so note the update and endorse the budget proposals, that's what I meant to say, if that's not what I said, then, yes, thank you for that. Yes, endorse the budget proposals in the appendix, thank you. Is that agreed? Yeah, yeah, that's agreed. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. The next item is the street trading resolution. Steve, do you want to introduce yourself and the report?
Yep, my name's Steve Onya, I'm head of licensing, but currently working on projects, and one of those projects is moving from street trading in the city centre to a markets street food initiative. I won't go through into too much detail, Chair. Obviously, the background to it is that we want to move from city centre street trading. Street trading comes under local government miscellaneous provisions act, it's quite restrictive on what we can do, and particularly about what we can charge. We want to move to a market licence initiative just in the city centre, under the Markets and Fair Clos Act 1847, which gives us a little bit more scope about how we control it, the quality of that offer, and also, we are allowed to charge a market rate for the site. Just on street food, it's become a well-established thing now around the country, it is a big interesting thing for most people now, many cities have got Italy, York, Manchester, Birmingham, and we have some of the best here in Sheffield, and I've worked closely with the Peddlers Market commune and people, and they're really excited about this and the possibility of bringing some of their trade into the city centre. So the proposal, Chair, is that in the long run, there's going to be three stages to this report, this stage today is just to really get your consent and to give permission to the director of Streets in Regulation to advertise our intention to change the street trading resolution. But in the wider sense, we want to move away from the city centre consent in the city centre, in a ring road, to a prohibited streets, that would prevent street trading, and then move to the marketing licensing initiative. street trading, and then move to the marketing licensing initiative. I won't go through the licensing or the legislation. The formal process, Chair, as I say, step one today is about giving consent to the Director to publish the notice, which will open the consultation 28 days. Step two, I'll come back before you in December, where we'll look at all the market side of this, the market regulations, the market licence document, et cetera, the qualitative criteria. Then we'll be back again in February, where I'll present to you the results of the consultation, and then it will be up to you as members to decide whether that is passed or rejected. There's not been much consultation at this stage. I've spoken to all the existing five consent holders who would be affected by this. There is a mixed feeling from them. Some of them are worried. It is difficult. We know what financial climate we're in. It is difficult for businesses, the cost of living, and it would be fair to say that their main concern is around the increasing fees, if there was to be one, but that's for the December committee to discuss. I spoke with them, two, a couple of them, two or three of them are happy. As I say, not any big issues. Just to go through item four, Chair, if it's agreed today that we can advertise our intention to pass a new resolution, then I will start to undertake any quality impact assessment. There's no real financial commercial implications at this stage. Obviously, once we move down into stage two and three, then there will be, there's no legal implications. Again, I will contact the relevant people and do a climate assessment later on. And the implications on the licensing and market service have been taken into consideration. It will move a small part of the street trading from the licensing service across to the markets team, but the loss of income, the licensing experience will be balanced out by the loss of work and so on. When you get to the markets, the increase of work will be balanced out by the increase of income. And the recommendation, Chair, is that you give consent to the Director of Streets in Regulation to advertise our intention to pass a new resolution.
Thank you. I saw Mark. Did you, yeah, Mark first and then Mike.
I've got my elbows out today, sorry, Mike. Really interested by this proposal. I'm not entirely sure what the implications will be for some of the provision, and certainly outside the city centre bit. So we're looking at the economic renewal activities around Spital Hill and such like and food providers there. What, how do you perceive this policy, which is city centre one specifically? How would you perceive this policy impacting on those areas that are immediately proximal to the city centre, like Spital Hill, where it is largely a food area, is largely a food sector, and I'm getting protective of my businesses there in so much that, yeah, we want to promote food awareness and everything else, and actually food provision, and make it more kind of festive and inviting for people to come to our city. But by the same token, I wouldn't want areas like Spital Hill to then be disadvantaged. So how would this policy affect areas like Spital Hill? How would you be including providers, restaurants in Spital Hill, to bring their wares into the city centre, to have themed days and such like? Is that something that's in this policy? And also, when we've tried to have festivals on Spital Hill to promote business and such like, we're really conscious of the fact that the businesses can't necessarily take their food wares out onto the street because they're keeping them warm and preparing them. Is there going to be anything within that to address those elements of their going forward, so that the district centres can learn and move forward as the city centre is as well, so that no areas are disadvantaged by this? Hope that makes sense, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, council. Yeah, I mean, the change that we're doing here in relation to the street trading only affects the city centre, won't affect anything else. Just then moving on to, obviously, we're wanting to encourage that street food trading, particularly around those mini-market sort of experiences where the market will be there throughout the weekend, selling all types of different food, potentially different drinks, and a little bit of music. Really, like you say, making the city centre more vibrant and attractive to people. I don't think it will have an impact on the outlying areas, but I think once we have done this, if this works and this is successful, then surely it'll be the guide to move it on into districts. So why can't we, once we've done it here, if it works, why can't we move it out to Spital or out to Ulsbourn or out to Mosbourn? I think it'll be a good way of seeing if it does work and if it's something that the people of Sheffield want.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Steve, for this report, which, to my mind, is very welcome. I do think we have to move with the times in the way other cities in the north have done, you know, with changing the licensing arrangements around their city centres. We know that city centres have been struggling in recent years with, as the internet has sent a lot of retail-type trade offline, but the one thing you can't get online is the, is this kind of offer, which makes the city centre more vibrant, and so long as we have good quality, a good quality food offer that is varied and reflects the more diverse and cosmopolitan choice of food that's available now compared to 40, 50 years ago, I think that really has to be welcomed. If I can just pick up one tiny bit on your report, point 152, step two, on page 263, you do say the 21st of December 2023, I think you meant this year.
My apologies.
Yeah. But thank you very much. It's a very positive report.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I have a couple of comments, actually. So again, I think there's possibly a slight parallel with the first decision we made in the kennel service, where we had to save some money, but we also wanted to do a better job. And the hope here is that we have more trading in the city centre. It raises revenue, but it also encourages business and encourages people into the centre and makes for a better city centre. That said, I think that I understand the concerns of the consent holders who exist already, because if it is seen as just squeezing more money out of them, if they are relatively successful, well, you know, they've got every right to be if they're doing a good job and selling what people want. If it's just squeezing more money out of them, then that's not a great proposal, as far as I see it. Even though it's a bit that we've been given that we have to raise some revenue, the money is in new street food markets. And, you know, if the existing traders, and I'm concerned in particular about, you know, ice cream traders have invested in electric vehicles on the basis they've got a consent for multiple years, don't want that taken out from under them. And that would be, you know, I think that would be an injustice if that were done. So I hope we can find a way, and this is just the initial proposal, so there are more reports to come if we were to go ahead. This is just the first step. I hope we can find a way to deal fairly with traders in that position. The final comment I would make, and the street food is, you know, it's a great thing to have, it's, you know, diverse in the kinds of cuisines that you get, but it is ultimately hot takeaway food. And this is what we've been asked, you know, this is a project has support, but it's also something we've been asked by the council at large to consider in terms of, in terms of, in terms of the future of the city centre. At the same time, the council is also considering a planning policy that would prevent hot takeaway food from buildings within 800 metres of secondary schools. And so, and that, within 800 metres of secondary schools does cover large parts of the city centre. It covers, for example, the space outside of the railway section, which we, you know, is one of the places we might want to use. So I do think at some point, somebody in the council, possibly higher up than ourselves, needs to decide, you know, that, needs to do some joined-up thinking on this issue and say, look, street food in its diversity is an example of hot takeaway food. That doesn't make it a bad thing. So I hope we can do this. I hope the council doesn't go ahead with the policy on takeaways, because that would be inconsistent. Thank you. So, right, people, suddenly I've got people fired up. And I'm so sorry I did this because we have 10 minutes before the need to renew, you know, extend again. I hope we don't have to. Mike?
Chair, I'm a bit disappointed that you raised that because we've been in a briefing recently with Steve Lonier, and he is taking that away to go and consult with senior officers in the council to find out how these two policies can be reconciled. So I do think we should allow some breathing space there. Also, now that you've mentioned it, I saw the map in the Sheffield Star, I think it was yesterday or the day before, and it identified or claimed to identify that all those circles were secondary schools. So I would very much like to know whether that is the case.
Well, you'd have to ask the Star where they've got the map. I'm not aware of any errors in the map. There may well be some, but it looks, you know, certainly the secondary schools I know have circles around them. Alexi?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Steve for the report and welcome the report as well. I think it's the way we want to go in terms of a city centre. It would cater more for residents in the city centre, where we're seeing more residents in the city centre that will need places to eat, and it will encourage people to stay in the city centre for longer and provide that social aspect that Mike was talking about. And I think it is entirely reasonable to have an exemption from the city centre in terms of that direction, the advice from public health and the local parent, especially in terms of the, you know, commuters coming to the station. And I think it's, yeah, really entirely reasonable to have that exemption.
Thank you, Alexi. That's a good idea, and maybe district centres as well, you never know. So I do apologise to Steve. We are doing what members do when, Steve, it's a serious piece of work that we need to consider. Do we, are there any more comments on the decision in front of us? Mark?
So I decided to go down to the market today for my lunch because it was nice and I was soaking wet and it's nice and warm in there. Do we perceive any adverse impact for the likes of More Market, which does have an interesting, I've always kind of thought from going to places like Brisbane and other places like that, that it would be really good to have a physical market where you've got the world's cuisines under one roof that you can actually choose from different bits. And the More Market sort of has done that, but hasn't quite done that on a wide enough bit. Do we think that this could have any negative impact on any of those businesses currently?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think Mike and I were in a briefing on just this earlier today, so I'll let Mike answer you.
Yes, it is something that's being explored by other officers, and I'm sure they will be in touch with Steve Lonier here to make sure that that can be, that can work. But we are, it is something that officers are looking at for the More Market and to see whether more space can be created there, given that that is definitely one of the more lucrative parts of the, of the More Market. If that is the bit that you would really want to expand.
Yeah.
Wasn't a planted question then?
Yeah, oh, was it? Right, a planted question. In that case, I, you know, in that case, yeah, I mean, the More Market, the street, sorry, the food court aspect of the More Market is thriving, you know, do go along there for your food. I think they have a waiting list now for tenants wanting to go in there, so to expand that. And yes, I think there are more kind of veering towards street food options there. There is more, there are more cuisines. Tim?
I'll do the street food market bit first. Obviously, we've got the More Market, which I like to go to. There's just over here, I might put it right, I can't remember, just over here, where they've got this multi, it's a growth thing. And I went to somebody's nurses leaving do at the old Co-op Commune, queuing out the door on a, these are the only busy places, these are the busiest places you'll find in the centre of Sheffield. This is the big growth where people want slightly informal but formal dining, have a choice, you know. I know what my children like, you know, one likes Mexican, one likes Indian, I'd like, you know, type thing. And so it's, so they have the option to have the choice where we're actually sitting round the table at the same time with different types of food. And these are the big growth options. I can't see that, I think it's only growth that we're looking at in this aspect. The other thing I was going to ask, which is more serious, which, when you talk about, for instance, ice cream sellers, and say they've got a lease that's longer than the time scale you've indicated in there, do they, their lease does roll, does roll over under these proposals, just to clarify?
I'll touch on quite a few of the things you've said. I mean, the proposal isn't to compete with any other markets. The proposal is about bringing in more, more things on offer to the public, particularly around weekends, that early evening. One of the biggest gaps that we've got in the city centre is the early evening. A lot of people always used to go out after work, five o'clock, stay out till eight o'clock. That's sort of died. So these sort of proposals are all part of that, to bring and keep people in between that, in that early evening period. So hopefully attract more business for everybody else as well. The intention with the existing street trading consent holders is obviously to transfer them across. There will be various options for you to decide when I come back in December and bring you the fees and the licence stuff and all the regulations. And part of that is, will, as the Chair's touched on about, probably keeping the fees to a reasonable price so we're not out pricing anybody, but also giving options about whether we licence for one year, five years or 10 years. So there'll be lots of options in that report to hopefully support the existing consent holders and encourage new ones into the trade.
Thank you. Excellent. I am conscious of time, so can we move to a decision on this? Are we happy to do that? Okay, so are we all agreed with this decision? Recommendations?
The recommendations are to consider and agree to move forward the proposal to change the designation of streets from Consent Street to Prohibited Streets and approve the commencement of a process to make that change, including the publication of a notice. The council intended to pass a new resolution under the Local Government Miscellaneous Provisions Act 1982, Schedule IV, to designate all streets within the city centre in a ring road as prohibited streets for the purpose of street trading. That sounds dreadful, doesn't it? But what we're talking about is moving to market licensing, so that's then therefore not to move away from street trading consents. And so that's why it sounds dreadful. It isn't really dreadful. Are we all agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So the final item is the Revenue Budget Monitoring Report.
So one-minute introduction, Chair, perhaps, and then a short time for questions if members have any.
Yes.
So month six monitoring for the council overall, showing 18.6 million pound overspend, slight improvement on the previous month. Just for members' interest, the month seven position is very, very similar to the month six, so no great shakes in there. Much of the monitoring report repeats things that have been before this committee before. It's a year-to-date report, that's somewhat inevitable, and the reasons underlying the overspend position remain pretty consistent over time. Specific to this committee, again, no great changes month to month. Energy costs increased. That's offset this year by one-off items, otherwise broadly balanced, and our best current estimate for energy costs for next year is included in the budget process, and is, as members will be well aware, part of the challenge that this committee's faced in trying to balance its budgets. I'll take any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Right, if there are any questions, I'll hold a vote to extend the meeting. Are there any questions? Can we approve another half-hour extension of the meeting, please?
I hope it won't take that long.
No, no, I'm not going to risk it. Is that agreed, a half-hour extension? Can I see those in favour? Yep, that's agreed. Okay, Mike, a question? Okay, Mike, a question?
No, it's, Chair, it was, it was just specifically on the, on the Wasteland Street Seeing, um, budget. If we're looking at page 270, um, there seems to be a shortfall of 300,000, um, doing, um, underspend, um, which at, at one level is quite heartening, um, but do we know where that, where that underspends, where the underspend or underspends are, are coming from? Thank you.
So, so what you've, what you've got, uh, Council Chaplain on page 272 is that it's quite a detailed variance analysis against this committee's particular underspend and it's, it's basically, um, the thick end of half a dozen items, uh, all of which are fairly small, going in slightly different directions. So there's no great trend of, of underspend, that the, the big number that's offset by one-offs is, uh, is in respect of energy costs, which results in almost a, a neutral position there, but you've got little bits all over the place, to, to put it simply.
So basically, all our officers, um, that work to the Wasteland Street Seeing portfolio are doing their best to, uh, keep on top of costs.
I'd, I'd agree with that, uh, Council Chaplain. Uh, the, the thing that's, um, given us some, some grief here is energy price increases, of which there is very little officers can do.
Thank you. I mean, I, I suppose I will have a question, seeing as we've extended it. I hope it won't take too long. And that is, um, obviously, an underspend position is, is good, well, it's not obviously good, but I think it's good on, on this occasion. If it means you're not delivering a service, obviously that's not good. But that doesn't mean to say that every part of the portfolio is underspending. There will be under and overspend within that. And I'm slightly concerned, and maybe this applies to other committees as well, that we're not on top of the overspends that are hidden by underspends and that we need to for next year get on top of those. I, I mean, is there any indication of overspends within the portfolio? I mean, I, I hesitate to, to mention it because, again, it's been subject to an earlier briefing that, that, um, some of us have been in. The position with the markets is, well, the markets are carrying the can for a lot of borrowing the Council did to build the market building, and it's not really, um, uh, necessarily a statement on how well the market is doing, because the market is actually doing, you know, it's, 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 it's making progress. But it's unlikely to make so much progress that it can pay its mortgage, which is a, possibly a mistake or a decision at least that the Council made as a whole, um, to build that building, uh, in the way it did, paying what it did. So, um, does the Council at some point own that and give the markets a bit of slack in terms of their overspend because of, you know, the revenues they can raise? But, but that's, sorry, that's another question. I have this digression. The central question was, uh, you know, are we on top of the, the overspends that are hidden by underspends?
Yeah, there are no material variances other than the energy price that, that I've, that I've mentioned, uh, a couple of times. You know, when, when you're looking at a 300,000 net underspend on a, on a, on an expenditure outturn of 137 million, that, that's balanced in my, in my world. It's, it's actually quite a good achievement. Some of the really big numbers that this committee looks after are relatively fixed once, once the inflation level has been, has been determined and the contract price increases has been, been agreed for the year. Uh, there are no wide variations within those line items. So if you see a, that 300,000 pounds underspend on, on waste management, there's, there's nothing particularly large underneath that that gives me concern. And, and just, just on the markets, um, if it, if that, if that cost didn't belong to this committee, it would, it would belong to another committee. It is a bit of a, a bit of a case of if you, if you have a balloon and you squeeze one end of it, it pops out somewhere else. So that, that, that needs to be paid for somewhere, whether that's right and proper for it to be this committee or right and proper for it to be somewhere else, it's still, still the same bank account, I'm afraid, Chair.
I think, Mark, I've set you off, haven't I? I can, uh, given that we only extended for one question, I can, I hope this can be the last one and we can, we can go home. Go on, Mark.
I was going to go for a hypothetical kind of thing, just to kind of like throw it out there for, for Ryan. Being as energy costs are, are our weakness at the moment, is there anything we can mitigate in the short term or anything we can do to address those uncertainties, uh, that would give us greater security going forward and be a potential business opportunity, uh, moving forward?
Okay, so, um, some of the budget proposals that, uh, this committee's been discussing, none of which I believe from memory are on the, on the, on the list that were, were endorsed earlier, but some of the, some of the budget proposals are, are the kind of things that can, that can save, save the Council money when it come, when it comes to, to energy costs. In terms of buying forward, the Strategy and Resources Committee approved a energy procurement strategy, um, a few months ago, recently, uh, which is seeking to stabilize the Council's energy prices for the, for the longer term. The first six months of the next financial year are a bit more difficult because it's going to take us a little while for that strategy to, to, to come, to come through. In, in the longer term, actually, the Council's longer-term objectives around net zero will ultimately support a reduced reliance on energy. You know, if we, if we think about things like the, uh, the leisure investment strategy that's been, um, in, in the, in, in development for, for a while now, there's an opportunity as part of that when we refurbish, redevelop or even rebuild some of our leisure centres to make them massively more efficient than the 30, 40, 50, 60-year-old centres that, that we, we make up most of the Council's estate. So there are plenty of opportunities out there. It's just going to require us to think a little differently. You know, it may mean that, you know, the business case for energy efficiency now is much stronger than it used to be because the, the price of energy is much higher. Now, whether that'll always be the case or not is a question of judgement, but so there are choices.
Thank you. And on that, I think that, um, closes our item. That is a report to note. So, um, are we agreed to note the, uh, the financial position at the end of month six? That's agreed. Thank you. And that includes the business for today. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for watching at home. I hope you enjoyed it.